Commission, Jackie, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Potts.
Here.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Here.
Commissioner Kelsi.
Here.
Commissioner Kowdor.
Here.
Commissioner Morris.
Here.
Commissioner Graeble.
Here.
Chair Scott. Here, thank you. Next up is the approval of the meeting agenda. I want to make one note on the approval of the meeting agenda. Under item 7B is a zoning ordinance update on residential development. If there are any folks here for that portion of the meeting, we are not going to spend an extensive amount of time talking about that. Because of some agenda items that have come up on this meeting agenda, as well as on our next meeting agenda, we are planning to have a public hearing on the proposed zoning ordinance changes at our first meeting in June, which, Carrie, I think would be June 12th. So, there's going to be a brief discussion, just asking for commission members to review the changes that have been made and forward comments to staff. But if you're here and expecting a long discussion on that, I don't want you to be waiting for an hour or two and then be disappointed. So with that, I would ask for a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Meeting agenda is approved. Next up is approval of the consent agenda. This is the portion of the agenda that we approve by vote. The only thing on the consent agenda this evening is the minutes of the regular meeting of our meeting on April 24th of 2013. Are there any changes, additions, corrections to the meeting minutes? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. And the consent agenda is approved. Next up is community comment. This is the opportunity for people in the audience to come up and tell us about an issue or a concern that they might have. The only restriction on it is that we ask that you not be commenting during the community comment on items that are going to be on this evening's agenda. There'll be a time for that during each of those items. I will note that for the third meeting in a row, we appear to have some students here from, I'm assuming, Valley View Middle School. You can feel free to come right up front if you'd like. You can come up, this is your chance to get extra credit, come up and make a comment, a community comment. I don't see everybody rushing for the aisles. It's recorded, you'll be able to prove to your teacher that you're up participating. All right, well, we'll give you a pass for this evening. Thanks for being with us. I hope you enjoy the festivities this evening. So next up is public hearings. The first item is a variance for Roy Lacy at 6905 Valley View Road in Edina, Minnesota. Chris, are you going to introduce this for us?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
On now? Okay. Thank you. I'll have you notice that I put in front of you a new survey. So that was just handed to me this evening, and I will explain that after I go through the PowerPoint. So it's just a slight change in the orientation of the house. Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, the request is for a 138.9-foot front yard setback variance to rebuild a home with the same non-conforming front yard setback as the existing home. The project is a tear-down rebuild of an existing single-family home. The property is located at 6905 Valley View Road for Jim and Debbie Ryman. It's highlighted here. What you'll notice is that the subject property faces Valley View Road, as does a number of other lots along Valley View to the west. Those lots happen to be quite a bit deeper. If you look here at the aerial, you'll notice that the subject home, which is here, is fronting Valley View. The other homes that are along the eastern side actually front Mark Terrace, and then you'll notice that the lot directly to the west, the home is actually two lots south of the subject home. The current home is here in the photograph. It's at 6905 Valley View Road. It has a tuck-under two-car garage, and is relatively close to Valley View. It's a little over 29 feet from Valley View Road. This is the home to the west at 6917 Valley View, the home adjacent to it that actually affects part of this front yard setback equation, and that's located 308 feet back from the front lot line. Now, this home and the home that's to the east at 6900 Mark Terrace, which is roughly 30 feet back from Valley View Road, you have to average those two front yard setbacks in order to then come up with the front yard setback for the property. These are the homes that are along Mark Terrace that back up to the subject property. This is a current survey of the home. It's fronting Valley View. What you'll notice is to the east, it's quite close to the side lot line. It's a little more than six feet away from the side lot line, which is non-conforming. It's a very large lot. Highlighted in blue is actually the buildable area of the lot, if the home is torn down. That's the front yard setback that must be maintained. It is the average of the two on either side, with the 25-foot rear yard setback and then the 10-foot side yard setbacks. That really is the allowable building area according to the ordinance. This is a combined survey of the existing home and then the proposed home, which I've updated you with the survey. It's pivoting just a little bit. Does not affect the side or the front yard setbacks in the latest version of the survey, but it does help the view of some of the homes along Mark Terrace that look across the back lot line. This then is just the survey of the proposed home. What they're proposing is actually a slightly deeper setback from the front lot line. It'll be at 34.89 feet instead of 29.7, so they're improving upon that existing non-conforming setback. All the other requirements are met. It's a rambler. This is the main floor, and then the lower level, the front and side and rear elevation of the home. Is the proposed development reasonable for the site? Staff believes the proposal is reasonable for four reasons. The proposed R1 single dwelling unit district home, it maintains all the requirements for the district. The home is appropriate in size and scale for the lot. It's a half-acre lot. The improvements will enhance the property and not detract from the neighborhood. The neighbor to the west is well behind and will remain well behind the subject home. The improvements will provide a reasonable use of a rather large lot that is virtually unbuildable, given the current front yard setback. The new home simply matches or closely matches the existing non-conforming setback that was in place since 1955. The home to the west was built in the 60s, so it is a more recent addition, and it does affect the front yard setback of this particular property. Will it relieve practical difficulties and prevent reasonable use? Staff believes the proposed variance is reasonable. The new home will be further back from the street than the non-conforming setback of the existing home on the property, which has been located on the property since 1955. Staff believes the proposed variance is reasonable, given that the required front yard setback renders the 26,634 square foot lot relatively unbuildable. The practical difficulty is therefore caused by the existing location of the adjacent home that was built in 1968 and the requirement for averaging the front yard setbacks. The lot is large with generous spacing between the new home and adjacent structures. It's actually improving upon the non-conforming situation on the east side. The garage will be over 10 feet away from the side lot line, whereas the existing living space of the home is a little over six feet. Are there circumstances that are unique to the property not common to every similarly zoned property that are not self-created? The unique circumstances are the existing lot is subjected to an average front yard setback that is deeper than the location of the existing home. The required setback reduces the buildable area dramatically, creating essentially an unbuildable lot. The proposed home is a one-story rambler, and it will be consistent with the location of the existing home and will not change the streetscape along Valley View Road. The character of the neighborhood consists of a variety of housing styles. The applicant is merely asking to preserve a setback pattern along the block that has included the existing non-conforming setback. Staff recommends approval of the variance based on the following findings. The proposal meets the required standards for variance because the practical difficulty is caused by the location of the home to the west that is actually located south of the subject property. The encroachment into the setback provides, improves upon, pardon me, an existing non-conforming setback that was established when the original home was built in 1955. Approval of the variance is subject to the following condition, that the home must be constructed as per the proposed plans, date stamped May 1st. And then also, I will have you notice that there was a survey that was submitted this evening, which shows the change in the orientation of the house. It simply pivots the house. It does not change the front yard setback requests that they are requesting for variance. It also doesn't change the side yard setbacks, but it does allow for a better view for the neighbors that back up to the lot that are to the east of the subject property. With that, I will stop and answer questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Ms. Zucker? So, Chris, is this one of the things that struck me about this, and even though we're not going to talk about this in depth later in the meeting, one of the changes we're considering making to the zoning code is to deal with situations like this.
Yes.
And if we were to make the change where you could, you could be either the, what did we decide it would be, the lesser of 30 feet from the front or your original setback, or the greater of 30 feet or your original setback? This, in fact, would be a case that wouldn't need a variance in the future.
That's correct.
Okay.
It would alleviate that problem.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Is the applicant present? And would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about the project?
I am Roy Lacy.
So, hang on one second, Mr. Lacy. Need that microphone if you're going to use the center. Welcome.
My name is Roy Lacy. I'm the, we're Lacy Brothers Homes. We're located at 15012 Highway 7. We've been engaged to design the Jim and Deb Ryman's home, and we will be the builders of that home. And what we've worked on extensively is to try, the middle home, which is Peter Sussman's, has quite an impact by moving the home or locating the home. It's moved, instructs his view that he normally would have had. So we've been working with him, and that's why you have a new survey in front of you that we pivoted the house nine feet to try to improve.
So do you have that in front of you on the table?
The survey?
Yeah.
Yes?
Okay, maybe if we get that, so.
Okay.
We've got that on the screen, and if you can maybe just explain to us how you're fancier than. How you're making the change, I think it'd be easy to follow.
Yeah, so what we did is pivot the home.
Can you, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Lacy. Can you, you mentioned Mr. Sussman earlier. Can you reference where his property is that's related?
His is the middle lot.
On Mark Terrace?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, what we've really done is we've improved by removing the house. We've improved the view for the first home. We've impacted the view of the Sussmans in the middle, and we have no impact to the view of the third house.
Okay.
Okay? So what we've been working on is to try and minimize the impact to the Sussman home. And that's why we've orientated the house. We've increased the view behind the garage by nine feet or nine foot, a little bit over nine feet, and then we rotated the corner of the house and moved that six feet forward to try and improve the view. They've been phenomenal to work with, so I think we have some agreement, at least that we've tried to minimize the impact to their home. So are there any questions? The Rymans are here, if you have questions for the Rymans.
Any questions for Mr. Lacy or for the Rymans? I guess no questions. Thank you very much. Stay close, we may have questions.
Oh yeah, I'm here.
So at this point, what I'll do is open the public hearing. If there's anyone present who would like to comment on this issue, come on up and let us hear what you have to say. Mr. Sussman. And Peter, you'll need the handheld, there you go.
Good evening. My name is Peter Sussman. I'm resident at 6904 Mark Terrace Drive, and I'm happy to be here this evening, basically to speak briefly to compliment the applicant in their responsiveness. Chris referred us to Roy a few weeks ago, and first, they provided information to better describe the property and the proposal, which is not strictly required for a front yard zoning variance, and that included a grading plan, which was very helpful to me as an architect, understanding the proposal. The second, which has been discussed both by Chris and Roy Lacy, was the mitigation of the impact on our property, and I have overlaid our home, which was built in 1970, which was oriented towards a very nice wooded view in the center of this very deep lot. The staff report refers to the effect of the proposal on the streetscape, but also there's the internal consideration, and that's what we've been discussing with both the contractor and the Rymans, the new owners, and they have been responsive with that. We realize that there's only so much of a change that could be made, but in working with them, this is, again, an overlay that led to the plan that you see today. The yellow represents the shift. Even a nine-foot offset of the garage is a significant improvement in terms of our direct view and back. And I'm not speaking on behalf of our adjoining owners, or neighbors, but the Reisters and the Bowens have been involved with us throughout this discussion with the applicant, and we're all very pleased with the outcome.
So, Mr. Sussman, as it's changed, are you supportive of the variance?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to comment? Seeing no further comments, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. All right, the public hearing is closed. We'll bring the discussion back to the Planning Commission. Commissioner Carpenter.
I'd say it's pretty clear that the neighbors are all outraged at one another at this point, so. I mean, I commend all sides on this. We usually don't get that much cooperation, and it's not to disparage anybody else, but it's really nice to see that this has been, at least between the parties, largely worked out. You know, in terms of the substance of the proposal, irrespective of what was already told, I was already leaning in the direction of supporting it, and I do so even more so now. I feel that content of the packet, along with the comments by Chris and statements by the architect and one of the residents, that this is a very supportable and reasonable proposal.
Would you care to make that a motion?
I would. Make a motion to approve based upon the staff report and public comments made during this session.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd take, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. The motion is approved and the variance is granted. Thank you very much. Next up is item number B-13-14, which is a 5.9 and 14.9-foot front yard setback variance request to tear down an existing home and rebuild a new home in its place at the same non-conforming and deeper front yard setbacks from the property located at 5501 Lakeview Drive for property owner Christopher Drazen. Chris?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, this request is for a 5.9 and 14.9-foot front yard setback variance request to tear down the existing home, rebuild a new home in its place at 5501 Lakeview Drive. It's a corner lot, so it is subjected to two front yard setbacks. This is an aerial photograph. The home, the front of the home faces Lakeview to the west, and then to the north, the Lakeview to the north, the garage loads off of, towards the north. This is the subject property as it exists today. It's currently a rambler facing Lakewood, facing west. This is the neighbor directly to the east at 4611 Lakeview. It's, the elevation is a little bit higher on this lot than the next-door neighbor, which is the subject property, and then this is the neighbor directly to the south at 5503 Lakeview. This is an existing survey of the subject property. What you'll notice is that the garage is 19 and a half feet away from the north lot line, and the front of the house is 41.9 feet away from Lakeview Drive right-of-way. The required setbacks are actually based on the adjacent neighbor's setback, and the home to the east is 40, a little over 40 feet away. So, the garage setback is very non-conforming, and the home to the south is 47.8 feet away from the front lot line. The existing home is at 41.9, so again, you have a non-conforming situation. This is the footprint of the proposed home. Highlighted in pink are the areas of overlap into the setback areas, and the hatched-in area is actually the allowable buildable area of the lot. The garage will improve upon the setback. It will have a setback of 25 and a half feet as opposed to the 19 and a half feet, so they're actually increasing that front yard setback quite a bit. And then on the front or along the west lot line, they will be matching that existing non-conforming setback. So you'll have the pink overlap here, and then a porch which is allowed to overlap into the setback area. Distance is between the homes, the new home and the home to the south is approximately 45 feet. The distance between the sidewall of the garage and the sidewall of the home at the back corner is roughly 30 feet. As you go further back, the home to the east does get closer to that side lot line. Here are the new elevations of the home. You have the west elevation, which would be the front, and then the north elevation, which is actually the side of the house with that new garage facing the north as the existing one does now, the east elevation, and the south elevation. The new home is proposed to match the 41.9-foot front yard setback and then increase the side yard setback, or side street setback, which is a front yard setback along the north side. The character of the neighborhood includes single-story homes, one and a half-story homes, and two-story homes, so this home will be similar to other homes that are in the neighborhood, and there have been some rebuilt homes as well. The primary issue is the proposed development reasonable for the site. Staff does believe the proposal is reasonable. The proposed use is permitted in the R1 single dwelling unit district, and it meets all of the other requirements in terms of height, setback, and coverage. The only variance that they are seeking are for front yard setback, which would be matching the existing non-conforming setbacks or increasing. The home is appropriate in size and scale for the 15,395 square foot lot. The building wall of the impacted neighbor to the east is approximately 30 feet from the sidewall of the proposed garage, and again, the home to the south is about 45 feet away. The improvements will provide a reasonable use of a corner lot and allow for a new home to be built at the same distance from the west lot line and from a greater distance from the north lot line than the existing home. The new home simply matches or improves upon an existing condition that's been in place since 1952. Staff believes the proposed variance is reasonable. The new home will match and improve upon those existing non-conforming conditions. The practical difficulties in complying with the ordinances are created by the required front yard setback that is dictated by the adjacent properties. The purpose behind the ordinance is to maintain an established front yard sightline and streetscape that's been there. The ordinance is meant to prevent a continual erosion of the established front yard setback pattern in the existing neighborhood by holding all new construction to the existing neighborhood standard. This will actually improve upon a setback on the north side and will simply match, again, the west setbacks. It should be noted that the amount of boulevard area along Lakeview as you get to the corner increases quite a bit. So in terms of the setback, all setbacks are measured from the lot line, but as you can see, the lot has a curvy side and front, the front, actually, the front is rather curvy and then the side is quite straight, but when you get to the intersection, there's about 30 feet of additional boulevard area from where that lot, front lot line is into where the curb line is. So there's quite a bit more visual yard area than actually is part of the lot. Are there circumstances that are unique to the property not common to every similarly zoned property? The unique circumstances are the existing lot is subjected to those adjacent front yard setbacks that are deeper than the location of the existing home. The required setbacks reduces the buildable area, pushing the new home further back on the lot, and the buildable area is not a, it's angled because of the angled lot line, so it's sort of an odd building footprint area. Staff recommendation is to approve the variance. Approval is based on the following findings. With the exception of the variance request, the proposal will meet all the required standards, and the proposal will meet the required standards for variance, again, because the proposed use of the property is reasonable, as the proposed home will uphold the established front yard setback pattern already existing on the block, and the practical difficulty in complying with the ordinance include the deep required front yard setbacks, the orientation of the home towards the street, and the angle east lot line. Approval of the variance should be subject to the following conditions. The survey date stamped April 24th, 2013, and the building plans and elevations date stamped April 24th, 2013. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Questions for Chris? Commissioner Graeble.
Chris, and I gather we don't have a drawing that shows the existing house superimposed over the proposed house?
We do not. The survey on top of the survey, we don't.
Is there any way we could get a requirement or something to do something like that, particularly in cases like these? Because it's hard to figure out, you know, really, what is the difference on the lot between what the existing house is and what the proposed is? Something like that would be helpful, I think, if we could do that in the future.
Yes, I think it would be.
Thanks.
Other questions? Commissioner Carpenter.
Chris, kind of along the same lines, when I was eyeballing the two different surveys, I had the impression that the new proposal orients the house so it's somewhat more perpendicular to the, to Lakeview Drive than what the original house was, and I don't know if that's a correct assessment on my part or not, or if I'm just playing visual games.
To which Lakeview Drive?
What's that?
Perpendicular to which Lakeview Drive?
Yeah, I'm.
The north one or the west one?
The west one.
Okay.
I believe in looking at the survey, the existing house is lining up to be parallel to that west lot line as, I mean, actually to the curb line.
Yeah, "parallel" is actually a term I was intending to use, but didn't seem to slip out of my mouth.
And I believe, whoops, the, the new house will as well. I mean, they're orienting the front of the house towards Lakewood Drive, Lakeview Drive, pardon me, and it is parallel to that westerly lot line. Obviously, the north portion of the house has some portions that stick up and also recede, and so it's a little bit different than the current home, which is pretty flat and L-shaped.
As I look at that, it just appears to me that the existing home location is, I'll say, less parallel than the new proposal. And again, it's just visually how it appears to me.
It's not as wide. It's not as wide along Lakeview, but, I mean, it is, it appears to be parallel and the new house is parallel to it as well.
Chris, just to clarify, there are two variances here, two front yard setback variances because both Lakeview Drives are front yards for purposes of our ordinances?
That's correct.
And so the west Lakeview Drive is the 5.9 foot setback variance and the north is the 14.9?
That's correct.
Okay.
And although the one on the, the north is increasing the setback, it's going from 19 and a half feet to 25 and a half feet. So they're not matching, the new garage isn't matching the old garage. It's actually getting further away from
Right.
the north lot line.
Is it the same distance with respect to the property to the east?
No. The existing setback of the sidewall of the garage is a little over 21 feet.
And now it's down to 11?
And now it's 11. And that's because there is an area above the garage which could be considered living space even though it's accessed from the mudroom. It's not connected by the second floor. I don't know if it's going to be conditioned space or not, but we have to treat it as living space. So that starts at 10 plus the height. So it's 11 feet away because of
Okay, so that complies with our side yard setback requirements?
Yes, yes.
Even though it's closer to the, to that side yard than the previous house was?
Correct. If there was, if there wasn't anything above the garage, it could be five feet.
Okay. Seeing no further questions, is Mr. Drazen here? The applicant or representative of the applicant here? Welcome.
My name is Doug Johnson. I'm with Building Concepts and Design, 80 East Little Canada Road. And Mr. Drazen is not here.
Anything you want to tell us about the application?
I'd pretty much be repeating what Ms. Ocker said. So, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson? Commissioner Platter?
And this is on the, I guess, the small setback side where it's 11 feet. Is that landscaping that's proposed in between?
That is currently there right now.
That's currently there right now, so that would be remain as is?
Yes.
Okay. I see one of the letters that expressed concern from the neighbor on that side. Have you been speaking to him or her about the closeness of, of the new home? Has that come up or has any discussions happened with, you know, what remains there for landscaping or has any of that occurred?
Yes, Mr. Drazen talked to all the neighbors in the proximity of the 200 feet and I believe that there's about seven letters of support maybe in the one to the east that you might be reading. But he has talked to her. I don't, I don't think anything has been changed or talked about as far as removing landscaping or doing anything with that.
Commissioner Potts.
That, that house to the east, it looks like that sits above the proposed house. Is that correct elevation wise?
About four feet.
And there's a retaining wall between the two that actually crosses the property line, it looks like, as well. So the new house will be, will, the first floor elevation will be lower than that existing one. And then, just to double check the setbacks that Chris was talking about from Lake, from both Lakeview Drives, it looks like the, you're increasing the setback in, in both cases with the new house.
The, Lakeview to the north, we're increasing from the existing house six feet from 19 and a half to 25 and a half. Am I right on that? Yes, yeah. And to the west, we are, from the existing house, we are improving the setback by approximately one to two feet.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
All right, any other questions or comments before we move to the public hearing? So this is the time that we would entertain comments and from members of the public who have an interest. Come on up, state your name and tell us about your perspective on the application. If you have something to show us, the middle is good. If you don't have something to show us, the sides are better. So if you want to show us that, why don't you put it on the table and we'll zero in on it and then you'll need to get the handheld mic. Perfect. Just introduce yourself, tell us your address and
Hi. My name is Margaret Shaw and I live at 4611 Lakeview Drive. And first of all, I would like to comment on Chris Drazen. I actually did talk to his wife in the bakery about this and I asked her about the landscaping on the side. And Chris did stop by the other night for approximately five minutes because he had his children in the car. And he told me that he would not be taking down the trees, but that he did not have time to talk to me about anything else regarding this variance. And that neither Chris nor the builder has asked me for my input or my opinion on this variance. And so I am the property to the east of this and the existing property here is 50 feet, approximately 50 feet from the property boundary line here. Now, the proposed property that, or the variance that they're asking for here is going to bring this house within 11 feet of the property boundary. Now, the existing home here is a one-story home and this is a two-story home. And so the variance that they're asking for is to pull the house back towards my house both, on both sides of Lakeview. So what my concern is with this is that I am going to have this two-story structure that's going to be placed right up next to my house. It's not only going to block most of the westerly views, the sun, and that I will have absolutely no privacy with the house there like that. And then also, it's going to be significantly larger than the house that's there right now. And that's just the finished square footage. There is also the unfinished square footage that's over the garage and then whatever else there is in the lower level too. So that's what my concern is, is that I have not been approached and asked for my opinion, my input, anything about what they're doing here. And I guess I should preference this with saying that I am a real estate broker. I have been selling real estate in the Twin Cities for almost 30 years. I have been on both sides of variances. And I know with the situation like with Lisi, that builders and owners can work with the properties around, around the site to not have such a negative impact as I feel that this will have in my house. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Are there other members of the public who'd like to comment? Seeing none, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing.
So.
And a second?
Second.
Well, in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. All right, so the public hearing is closed and we'll move the discussion back to the Planning Commission. Commissioners, comments, discussion? Commissioner Gravel.
This strikes me as a McMansion issue. This house that we're seeking a variance for is easily twice as big as the house that's there now. As the neighbor says, moved closer to her property, although in fairness, I guess it does meet the, the setback requirement, but, I don't know, seems like they could have done more to work around and maybe have less of an impact on the neighborhood.
Chris, do you have the drawing that had the pink highlight on it showing? Here it is, okay. So that drawing can give us a little bit of the building envelope that would be permissible. So certainly on the north boundary, it's where the pink starts. And on the western boundary, it's where the pink starts. The eastern boundary, we've already talked about the 11 feet, so that's permissible there. So on the, on the south, is it where that dashed line is?
That's correct. The black dashed line is the building envelope opportunity, if you want to clarify.
So that's where the house could be, if it was within that kind of dashed line, no setback variances would be required anyway?
Correct.
Assuming that it was a two-story because of the 11-foot side yard setback. It might be 10 feet if it was a one-story or, or if there was no living space above the garage, it could be five feet.
That's correct.
Commissioner Platter.
So this comments for you, Carrier, Chris. In the building area that was just put up there, is that, does that seem like a reasonable area to, to build within or does that seem like a kind of unbuildable space, you know, because of this corner lot? I'm just, you know, if you have an opinion per se on that, how, how, it seems like an odd shape back there and it's pushing in a lot of different directions on a really, I don't know, trapezoidal square or whatever it is there. I'm just looking for another opinion on that.
Well, it's not a perfect square and as far as what's reasonable these days, I, I don't even want to guess.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sure you can put something in there, but
You didn't hit it on softball, huh?
I, I might add that if you notice, if they shifted it to the south away from the pink area, that would have more of an impact on that home, the adjacent home to the east.
I guess that's kind of what I was getting at is, is where it's showing, where you could build would probably be a larger impediment to what is showing right now.
It pushes it deeper on the lot.
Pushes it deeper on the lot. So they're within that and no variances required, they would have actually be much closer for a greater proportion of it, right?
Possibly, yes.
Commissioner Gravel.
But they, but they haven't proposed to do that, so we don't know what the effect would be. They are asking for a variance now to do what they want to do, which is not move it back on a place that is buildable, so. I think when you come to, commission to ask for a variance, you know, you can do what you can do if it's within the, if it's within the limit, but when you come and ask for a variance, I think you're, we're entitled to exercise a bit more scrutiny on the, on the process.
Well, if they didn't come ask for a variance, they could build it all right there. It seems, I mean, would you, would you approve it going back farther then? Is that what you're saying? It should be within that trapezoid?
I'm saying if they build it in the lot area, they don't come before a variance and then I don't have an opportunity to comment on it. But they've come and asked for a variance and I've commented on it and I think it's too big for what they're trying to do and it impinges too much upon the neighbor's house. What they can do if they didn't do, if they didn't have this proposal, I don't know. That's not before us.
Well, I think one of the things that's unusual, not, certainly not unique, but unusual is that there are, because it's a, it's a corner lot, you've got two front yard setbacks. So you've got setbacks required in this case of almost 41 feet and almost 48 feet on two As a result, even though the house that is proposed is larger than the house that exists, the lot coverage will still only be just over 20%. 25% is permitted under the code. Commissioner Gravel.
Yeah, question for Chris. Chris, on the existing house, is that patio area, is that counted on as lot coverage?
It is all but 150 square feet of it. I don't know if they actually, they put 200, they subtracted off 200, so it's 660 square feet that is counted.
So right now, that is basically an area that is consistent with ground level as opposed to two-story building?
Commissioner Forrest.
It is a bit of a catch 22 for the builder and homeowner in that if they were to pull the home away from the neighbor's home, then they would need an increased variance than what they're asking for now. And if they were to build within that trapezoidal buildable area, they would not only impinge probably more on the neighbor's view, but they'd lose the backyard altogether. So it's, it's kind of a tricky balancing act we're looking at here for, for all the parties involved. And for us. I'm just not sure, I, I, to me, it's, it's a really difficult one because I really respect the concerns of the neighbor and I also am concerned a little bit about the facade of that garage being such a plain blank wall that's, that's now closer to the neighbor's home. On the other hand, that side, they aren't asking for a variance on that side and it's totally buildable, you know? A structure is buildable that close to that home. In balancing the factors, it could be, if they weren't asking for a variance at all, it could be a further impact, a negative impact on the neighbor. And so that's kind of where I'm falling in that I see that, it's also though twice, you know, it is about 35 feet high versus under 20. So it's, it is a big change for the neighbor as well and I recognize that, so it's a tough one.
Well, I'm struck by the irony that addressing the neighbor's issue would require us to grant a greater variance on one or two sides. You know, the, the side yard setback adjacent to the neighbor complies with our side yard setback requirements. The height of the building complies with our height requirements. She's actually uphill from this property, which should help not hurt that. And I, I don't see, I mean, I, I think it's hard for us to grant a bigger variance when the side yard and the height are already complying with what the code requires. And, and in terms of the, you know, the size of the house, I mean, it's, it's by, it's quite easily meeting the lot coverage limits that we have. It's a relatively big lot. Yeah, it's 20% rather than 25% and it's meeting the height requirement. So I, you know, I think pursuant to our code, they're permitted to have a house this size and a lot this size and, you know, to me, the, the practical difficulty is you've got a corner lot and you've got two other houses that set your side yard or your front yard setbacks, your dual front yard setbacks at a, at a larger than usual distance and so on And so it strikes me that a variance is appropriate here. Commissioner Potts.
Mr. Chair, I agree with all of those comments. I guess I've got two, a couple of points to make, one positive and one negative. I think that, on the positive side, I appreciate the design of this house. I think it's an attractive design. I appreciate the fact that it's been pulled further back on both the north and the west sides from the lot lines, from the streets than the existing house. I think that's a positive, even though they need a variance because it strays outside our technical description of a buildable area where two front setbacks exist. I also wanted to point out that the, on the garage, I'm looking at the plan with the pink on it, the back of the garage that projects to the south, that portion of the garage is one-story. And as has been pointed out, sits down lower than the adjacent house. So I think there's been some sensitivity with the design of the house, again, compared to what could have been built where no variances sought and this were, and a two-story home was constructed within the buildable area. Having said all that, I think it's very unfortunate that the owners haven't made more of an attempt to have some productive discussions with their neighbor. I think that that should be noted. And I think before the house is demolished now, in fact, we have a meeting requirement, correct, with adjacent properties. And hopefully that, you know, at that time, things can be set straight. So those were my comments. I guess, having said all that, I'd also offer a motion, if there are any other comments, to accept this variance proposal per the staff report and recommendations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Commissioner Grable.
As I'm looking at the survey of the proposed house, I note that along the west side, on a dotted line, they show the 41.9-foot setback is established by the previous house. If they moved the front of this house up three feet to that side, they could do that. And if they moved it an additional two or three feet, it would have minor impact on the neighborhood, but it would add another six to eight feet along that back lot line and give some relief to the neighbors. They could do that quite easily. As long as they're asking for a variance, they could ask for that additional variance. But they haven't done that. They're building a mansion on this lot, as close as they can get it to the neighbor's house. And I, you know, I just don't think it's appropriate. What's the practical difficulty for that? You know, the fact that it's a corner lot, corner lots have that requirement. And I just don't see the need for variance or the justification for variance in this case.
Further discussion? Commissioner Carpenter.
I'm inclined to concur to a large extent with Commissioner Grable's comments. I don't see, I don't see an urgent need for us to jump onto this and support it if, in fact, there are alternatives that could have been done that could be more favorable to the adjoining neighbor. So it may be ripe for us to act on, but perhaps, perhaps an affirmative vote may be more difficult to get this time around.
Further discussion? Commissioner Forrest, I see you stirring down there.
I'm just...
Just stirring? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
We better have a roll call on that, Jackie.
Commissioner Potts?
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Nay.
Commissioner Carr?
Aye.
Commissioner Platter?
Nay.
Commissioner Forrest?
Aye.
Commissioner Grable?
Nay.
Sheriff Stone?
Aye. So four to three. All right, so the variance carries four to, the motion carries four to three, the variance is granted. What happens from here? Is there a rate of appeal on this?
There's a 10-day appeal period.
Okay. So I know for the neighbor who had objected, there is an opportunity to appeal to the city council and they would consider this as well. And you'll have 10 days to do that. I would recommend you touch base with staff on that. All right, next up is agenda item 2013-10010, a request for a conditional use permit and variances for 6612 Indian Hills Road, property owned by Malcolm Lepke. Chris?
Subject property is a corner lot. It is located north of Indian Hills Road and east of Indian Hills Circle. It backs up to Arrowhead Lake. It actually consists of two properties located at 6612 and 6608 Indian Hills Road. Here's a better view of that. The existing property that has a home on it is 6612, and that's the lot that we're going to be referring to this evening. The lot that is to the west, east, pardon me, is owned by the same property owner. It is subjected to a no-build restriction that's recorded with the county, so there won't be any construction on this property that's between the subject home and the property to the east. This evening, the request is for a conditional use permit with the following variances. A variance from the conditional use permit requirements to allow the new first-floor elevation of the home to exceed the one-foot maximum increase allowed by ordinance. They're also requesting a 4.7-foot setback variance from Indian Hills Road to allow a small portion of the stone terrace and the corner of a subgrade garage to overlap the required 80-foot front yard setback. The home to the east at 6604 Indian Hills Road is located 80 feet back from the front lot line. That is the required setback for the subject lot. They also have a setback along Indian Hills Circle that they have to respect, as well as a 75-foot setback from the lake. They're requesting a 12-and-a-half-foot setback variance from Arrowhead Lake to locate the new home at approximately the same setback as the existing home. It'll actually be six inches further back than the existing home. And a 33.92-foot setback variance from Arrowhead Lake for an on-grade terrace beyond the back wall of the new home. This is the existing home. If you've been by it, it still looks like that. The property owner, Malcolm Lepke, is proposing to tear down the existing multi-level home built in 1953 and construct a new home at 6612 Indian Hills Road. The property is a corner lot located north of Indian Hills Road and east of the circle. And the existing home on the site is a multi-level home with a series of additions over time. And you can kind of see that, that the house steps up the hill. There were multiple additions to the home. The new home will have a flat roof and will be contemporary in design. This is the property that's directly to the east at 6604 Indian Hills Road. If you were by there today or in the last few days, doesn't look like this. It's also under construction. This is the home that is the neighbor to the west at 6616 Indian Hills Circle, is actually facing the circle. It's quite a bit of ways away from the subject home. This is the neighbor across the cul-de-sac at 6620 Indian Hills Circle. And this is the neighbor across Indian Hills Road. It's a new home, and that addresses 6600 Iroquois Trail. And the neighbor across the street at 6601 Iroquois. This is a rendering of the home that they're proposing. It's a two-story home with a garage that loads off of Indian Hills Circle. It's banked into the hill. There'll be plantings on top of the garage. So this is a view, actually, if you're standing there looking at it from Indian Hills Road. And then here's the back view of the home. It is a two-story home. The second floor element is about 30 percent of the area of the floor below. And then it is a walkout, so from the lakeside, this is the view of the home. Again, the applicant does own the lot to the east. It has a restriction put in place upon it that is no-build restriction. It was actually subdivided in 1984, and the city put on a conservation restriction upland from the lake as well. But with the no-build restriction that's been recorded on the property, this property will remain vacant. So the property that actually sets up the required setback from Indian Hills Road will have, or will continue to have, a no-build lot between the two properties. This is, and it's a little difficult to see, the existing home underneath the new home. And I tried to make it a little more color-coded so you could see what that looks like. The new home is a green, is the green portion. You can see that the back wall of the current home is the closest point to Arrowhead Lake. The area in pink, those are the areas that are the overlap into the front yard setback, as well as overlap into the required setback from Arrowhead. But again, it's just slightly further back from the existing home that's there today. And then the blue triangular portion is an on-grade terrace, most of which are access stairs here and here. And those areas can overlap into the setback area. We have to allow access. So it's really just the, this triangular light blue area that overlaps the setback. This is the lower level, main level, and then, again, the second floor, which is just about 30 percent of the floor area, the main floor area below. The two elevations, both south and north, and then east and west. The proposed plan requires the following, a conditional use permit with a variance from the conditions required for the conditional use permit. The existing home has a first-floor elevation of 900.2. It is a multi-level home, so according to the ordinance, the first floor is actually the level of the entrance of the home. The main level of the home is actually at 904.3. They would like to put the main floor at 904, which is slightly lower than what is considered the existing main level of the current home because it is a multi-level home. But according to the ordinance, they are held to the entry level of the home. There is a 4.7-foot setback variance from Indian Hills Road to allow that small portion of a stone terrace and the corner of the subgrade garage to overlap the setback. And then a 12-and-a-half-foot setback variance from Arrowhead Lake, which actually locates the house slightly further back, and a 33.92-foot setback variance from Arrowhead Lake for the on-grade terrace. The conditional use permit requires that the application does not have an undue adverse impact on government facilities, will not generate traffic with the capacity of streets serving the property, does not have an undue adverse impact on public health, safety, or welfare, will not impede the normal or orderly development or improvement of other property in the vicinity, and that it will conform to the applicable restrictions and special conditions of the district imposed by the section. And that is also consistent with the comprehensive plan. The home that's there currently meets all the conditional use permit requirements in that regard, as does the proposed home, although there's additional conditions that are required if they're requesting a first floor in excess of one foot above what's existing there now. And those first three criteria, one of the first three must be met, and then the fourth must be met in all circumstances. The first three criteria, you may recall, they're allowed to increase the first floor to the extent to bring it up above the 100-year flood elevation, or if there are some water table issues and they need to increase the first floor above that. Or the first floor elevation must be increased to the extent necessary to allow the new building to meet state building code. The request does not meet any of those first three criteria. It's not in the flood zone. There aren't water table issues. They can certainly build within the state building code. It will meet the fourth criteria, which it must meet, that the increased first-floor elevation will only be permitted if the new structure addition fits the character of the neighborhood. Indian Hills is rather eclectic. There's a lot of different housing styles. There's some new homes, homes that have been there for many years. This home has been designed to fit in with the existing contours of the lot and to be organic in nature. They didn't want to have to do a lot of grading on the property, so they're trying to respect the natural conditions that are out there right now. The primary issue is the CUP for a proposed new home with a first-floor elevation 3.8 feet higher than the existing home, reasonable for the site. Staff believes the proposal is reasonable. The proposal meets the conditional use permit requirements for Section 85004, as does the existing home. And then for the additional requirements, to allow the new first floor to exceed one foot, the conditional use permit criteria to raise the first floor higher than one foot does not take into consideration where the existing main floor is on a multi-level home. The first floor of the new home will match that existing main floor. The home has been designed as a low-profile home and to respect the existing topography of the lot. Conforming to the ordinance with the plan would require removal of much of the natural topography and require regrading of the property. The proposal of the home is in character with the existing neighborhood, and there are a variety of housing styles, as I mentioned earlier. Are the proposed variances justified? Will it relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use from complying with the ordinance? Reasonable use does not mean the applicant must show the land cannot be put to any reasonable use without the variance, rather, the applicant must show that there are practical difficulties in complying. Staff believes the proposed variances are reasonable. The improvements would provide reasonable use of a corner lot subjected to two front yard setbacks, and then also the lake setback that's subjected to the property with a home that currently has a non-conforming setback. The setbacks from Indian Hills Road are for minor point intrusions of the at-grade terrace that is more to the east, and then the garage, which is actually banked into the hill with a garden area above. The setbacks from, again, from Indian Hills Road are minor point intrusions. The practical difficulties include the steep slopes on the lot, the shape of the lot, and the required setbacks based on the adjacent home, which is an 80-foot setback and has a vacant lot in between this home and the home to the east. The purpose behind the ordinance is to maintain an established front yard sightline and streetscape and remain adequate distance from water bodies. The ordinance is meant to prevent a continual erosion of both of those standards. The front yard setback standards, again, are setbacks are minor point intrusions, will not affect adjacent properties, will not affect the streetscape. Duplicating the late setback also should not have any impact, negative impact, on the lake. Are there circumstances that are unique to the property and not self-created? The unique circumstances include the irregular shape of the lot, the large size of the lot, and the restrictive setback from Arrowhead Lake. And again, the additional setbacks required from the street frontages. Will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? The variance would allow the home to maintain the character of the site and lot by keeping the grades near existing conditions. The home design is low-profile, with 70 percent of the mass of the home on the main level, as you can see, with only 30 percent of the second floor above, and it's inset and further away from the front face of the home. Staff recommendation is approval of the variances for conditional use permit and front setback variance, as well as variance from Arrowhead Lake. Approval is based on the following findings. The proposal meets the conditional use permit requires. Will keep the first floor at approximately the same height as the existing main level. The home is in character with the neighborhood, would meet the required standards for the And the purpose behind the ordinance is to maintain that established front yard setback along the streetscape and create a low-profile, flat-roof home adjacent to the lake. Approval should be subject to the following conditions. The survey date stamped April 24, 2013, and building plans and elevations date stamped April 24, 2013. Submission of a copy of the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District permit. The city may require revisions to the approved plans to meet the district requirements. Final grading and drainage plans are subject to review. Final grading and drainage plans are subject to review and approval of the city engineer prior to issuance of building permit, and the execution and recording of a conservation easement of forty-one feet upland from the ordinary high-water level of Arrowhead Lake, which would create a buffer between edge of the lake and the edge of the proposed terrace. With that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Questions for Chris. Commissioner Platter.
Hey, Chris. I just have some questions. Can you go to that slide that has, that shows the setback areas, where that colored one? So, just to understand this a little bit better. So the red area is the area that the new home is in, the Arrowhead Lake setback, but that's where the existing home is. Is that correct?
The pink area, reddish-pink area, is the setback, the required setback areas. The green is the existing home, and you can see that the green here is closer to the lake than any of the portions of the proposed home.
Okay, so there's a lot more area that's proposed closer to the lake than the existing home, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the blue area, what is the blue area? And so that's like a thirty-one-foot setback?
That would be for the terrace. Most of that is actually access stairs. It would be mostly this triangle. It's an at-grade terrace area.
And so the setback from the lake is seventy-five feet?
For everything.
Why, or why is it seventy-five from the lake versus, aren't some water bodies fifty feet? I'm just curious.
They are. The DNR sets the standard that we have to adopt, and, you know, when I first started working here in nineteen ninety, all the setbacks from water bodies were twenty-five feet.
Okay.
And so there's a lot of non-conformities as well, given that we've had to adopt a fifty-foot setback from most water bodies, but there are some water bodies that are seventy-five.
Okay. So, if you could, if you could, could you tell me what staff's reasoning is that all that terrace should be approved by the variance, even though it's all within, or was all within that seventy-five-foot DNR setback? What's the rationale why that should be approved?
Well, most people, when they're considering a building project, they don't even think an at-grade patio would be subjected to those kinds of setback requirements. I mean, that's not an unusual thing for somebody to assume, but then they find out, you know, the setback standard is applied no matter what. And a lot of times, patios will go in because there's no permit actually required for a patio. So, I do appreciate if there is improvements shown in a project that illustrate things that, you know, may come in later, or, you know, assuming somebody doesn't know what the requirements are. An at-grade patio is much different than a structure area that's three-dimensional, that has roof, that's three stories or two-and-a-half stories. It's at-grade. It won't even really be visible from the lake, as the lake is much lower. We do have examples...
That's kind of the opposite argument that was given for the one over here on the creek. The argument was that the house going closer to the creek was not a big deal, because there's already patio there. So I'm trying to understand how staff is approaching these. Is it better or worse to have a house closer, or better or worse to have the patio closer? Because it seems in those, they're two different arguments, depending on which one is moving closer.
In that instance, they wanted to utilize the deck setback for the entire setback of the house, so they were moving it...
So they're building a house, which you just mentioned was much larger structure than the patio is here.
Right. They were, in that instance, they moved the house closer to the setback of the deck, and that was not supported. This is not moving the house closer to, it's actually a little bit further back from the lake.
Do you know why the DNR treats a house and any hard surface deck the same, then? I mean, the setbacks the same from the DNR, correct? Whether it's a house or a patio area?
Right. I mean, I think they're just, that's the setback standard, regardless of what it is.
Okay.
Except for perhaps a boathouse, because they have preview over that, I guess.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Chris, just a real quick question, I think. With respect to the conditional use permit to raise the first floor higher than one foot, does that go back to the moisture intrusion issues that we talked about?
Yes.
A few years ago?
Yes. That's exactly where that's coming from. It's only allowed in certain instances, if you have to raise it because of the flood zone, or you have to raise it because you have water table issues, or, you know, issues of that nature, or if there's some construction issue that you can't meet with the state building code. But in this instance, the ordinance also requires that we look at the entrance level of a multi-level home for first-floor elevation, whereas, a lot of times, your first floor, your usable first floor is going to be higher than that. It's not where you're coming in the door, and that's what they would like to do, is to match it.
Welcome, Commissioner Shearer. Good to have you here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Grable.
Chris, do you know, is there any public access to this lake?
No.
No, no public access?
No.
Unlike the creek, there's no public access?
No.
Thank you.
Chris, can we get, I don't know if you have it in hard copy. I'm trying to get a sense from the site plan about where the buildable envelope is on this. And so the slide you had up a minute ago that had some of the colors might have it, but I can't quite get my arms around exactly where the buildable area is. Because it certainly seems like they're right up against the lot coverage. They're almost twenty-five percent on lot coverage.
Well, and let me add, that we're not looking at that lot to the east, and that's a no build...
Right, you're not counting that. You're just counting, it's twenty-five percent of the lot that...
It's twenty-five percent of this very large lot here, but from an ordinance standpoint, if somebody owns an adjacent lot, and this is not a buildable lot, it can be considered one buildable parcel.
And in fact, there's no side yard setback variance needed here?
No.
Because they own the adjacent lot?
They own the adjacent lot.
Okay.
But I mean, I guess in all fairness, we should consider the fact that they have this extra lot, it's not going to be built on, and the coverage of that portion of the parcel is, you know, going to make the lot much larger.
Sure. Can you trace along the, along the street frontage where the, where the line is?
For front yard setback?
Yes.
That's along here.
Okay.
And that's based on the house at sixty-six oh four.
And then the rear is kind of, if you follow the pink line, right? The bottom of the pink line there?
Right.
So that would be the band that they would be permitted to build within?
Right.
Okay. Further questions for Chris? All right, hearing none. I think we'd like to hear from the applicants. Are the applicants or representative of the applicant present? Come on up, introduce yourselves.
Good evening. My name's Christian Dean, four-two-two-one, Beard Avenue, south of Minneapolis. I'm the architect for the Lipkes.
Welcome, Mr. Dean.
Thank you. I think I should just frame up the intent of the house when we first started this.
Sure.
The overall intent was to design a low-slung house. It sits on the top of the hill. It doesn't have really tight neighbors to it. There's a neighbor across the cul-de-sac, and then obviously, there's a neighbor across another empty lot, and then neighbors across the lake. So the context of it was that we didn't have a, kind of a tight site, so we thought, instead of building a very tall, kind of boxy structure, maybe two, two-plus stories, we said, let's make a real conscious effort to build a low house that really works with the landscape. So we've made kind of really strong efforts in terms of working with the existing topography. So, for example, as you drive up, we've tried to embed the garage at native grade. We've tried to do a walkout where we're walking out at native grade as well on the lakeside. And then really, as Chris said, you know, thirty percent of this house is two-story. So, I mean, for a fairly large-sized house, predominantly, it's a single story with a walkout. And so, you know, I think the consequence of that, to build kind of low horizontal, more fragmented, you know, something that makes spaces, if you saw the site plan, for example, you know, what we're trying to do is, you know, the house is a bit more of, kind of reaches out into landscape, and I think that's part of the kind of organic quality of it. We've got this kind of wonderful south courtyard. The house is set back from the street. So in a way, you know, the consequence of being more horizontal and low, we've kind of got these marginal areas where we've reached the setback issues, the variances. And again, those are marginal corners and not like full facades. For example, one is just the terrace of this kind of bedroom wing we have here. So we're just trying to create some outdoor spaces as well. So our hope is that this is a good model for building a large home. It's not a big McMansion, as people call them. It's low-slung, horizontal, it's modern, but still sensitive to the landscape. And part of that, again, in terms of building within the landscape, was this idea of the conditional use permit, which is unfortunate. You know, the house was built in a series of stages, and that, it is a strange kind of split-level home, because a split-level home here is embedded in the hill. And so that split-level entry is significantly below the kind of crests of that hill. And so if we were to maintain that as our main-floor elevation, we would have to chop off the top of the hill considerably. So again, just trying to work with the topography, we said, we should just set the main level and the entry level similar to the old house, which is at nine oh four, which is also very similar to the top of the hill.
Can, can I, I'm just having a hard time grasping that concept, and I think it's a really important one as we work on this. So can you, is there a graphic you can show us to illustrate why, why it's, I mean, it's obviously not going into the side of the hill where you enter now? Is the, is the entry moving along the length of it? Is that why it's changing?
Not so much about its location laterally across the site. It's just that this, this existing house, this split-level entry, and you can't really see in this photograph, in this photograph, because there's a bit of a retaining wall here, but this area of the hill, you know, is about, I think, nine oh four, nine oh five, and this entry here is about nine hundred. So if that was our main level of this house and our entry, you know, we'd be significantly below a good chunk of the site.
And so as part of, since part of the house is moving up the hill from where the existing house is, then you would have to dig into the hill to embed it?
We'd be digging into the hill quite a bit, that's right. And then also, if we would have set the main level at nine hundred, the opportunity for a walkout would have been challenging, because then that lower level would have been more embedded in the site, and so we would have more excavation to do as well.
On the backside.
So it's just, you know, this is kind of the architecture of building a house for us, is to really work with topography. And so what we're looking at is key points, you know, the entry to the garage, the walkout in the back, and then the kind of natural topography of the, of the main part of the site. And those three points were things that we were really trying to work with.
Okay.
And so, in the spirit of this, we think, even though we are non-compliant with some of these wings of the house, I think the house would be more imposing if we were fully compliant and larger in a way. So, that's our strategy with this house.
Now, with respect to the front yard, you noted that there's a couple of minor places where it encroaches on the front yard setback.
That's right.
So the question in my mind is, so why not just back them off another two feet? What is it, what's magic about that, 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 you know, it's a double-edged sword, if you see my meaning? If you only need to encroach a little bit, then why do you need to go that extra foot or two longer?
Right. And other people would say, as long as you're encroaching, why not go more?
Right.
So we're being sensitive.
And we just had that discussion.
So it's like, two feet, why don't you go for six? We, you know, it's just a matter of dimensionally, trying to fit the garage in there, and then having some living space in front of it, and it just, I mean, we worked quite a bit trying to rotate the house around, and we felt this was the best-case scenario, where it's minor encroachment on the, on the Indian Hills side, but not overdoing it, to be honest. And that was, it's just a balance of things from our...
And you couldn't slide it any further?
We've slid it around, you know, there's... You know, if you can see, I think on Chris's slide, you know, the west corner is right at where the old house was. The lakeside, again, we're a little bit back from where the old house was, and then we're just touching that property line again.
On the east side.
So we're just, we're touching all these points, and we're just working this out as best as we can.
Other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Platter.
So, so when you designed this, were you aware of the seventy-five-foot setback from the lake?
We were, and, and we were basically just trying to work within the existing house structure, the existing house. We didn't want to go any further than that house, but again, we were just trying to work as best as we could, staying as far back as we could, and not be any more non-compliant than the existing structure. Then as far as the outdoor terraces, as I think the conversation earlier was, you know, we felt, you know, permule pavers, something like that, would still be, you know, sensitive to the hardscape issues, and, again, being low-level, high up from the lake, we don't think that's going to have a very big impact in terms of the presence of those outdoor spaces from the lakeside.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Forrest.
I just want to add to that a little bit. I respect the design, and I do like the low, low profile, and the fact that it is integrated into the topography of the property. I am concerned about that setback from the lake, because the DNR made changes for good reasons. It went through a rulemaking process, and it puts in place rules that say, if you're going to tear down a house, if you're going to build anything new, it's got to be seventy-five feet back. And so I'm really having a hard time with that one, because it seems like we should not just cavalierly disregard that. Even if it had a better impact on the, on the ecology of the lake, it's a tough one to disregard, because it went through a state rulemaking process as well. So I'm just telling you, I'm struggling with that one, and I'm not sure how you, how or if you could address that any further.
Well, I think with a property like this, you know, we wanted, you know, a significant outdoor space on the lake, and as opposed to maybe an overhung balcony, or suspended terrace, structured terrace, or a structured deck, we opted for something that was low-level. While that might not have the most significant lake views, we're settling for a low terrace that we think is part of the landscape, that has less of an impact, I think, than a structured outdoor space that's attached to the structure. So, you know, again, we're just being mindful of trying to keep the structure back, and as Chris said, we want to be full-frontal about what we're doing here, and we would like to get the terraces approved, because we don't intend to do it later, we want to do it now, we want to put it out there that we're doing it, and we're being sensitive to that.
Other questions for Mr. Dean? All right, hearing none. Don't go far, because I'm sure we'll have further discussion, but what I'd like to do now is move to open the public hearing, and this is the time for any members of the public who would like to comment on this application to come forward and state your name and address, and give us your comments. One of the two-side podiums is probably best here.
My name's Penn Jocelyn.
Welcome.
Thank you. And we live at sixty-seven eighteen Indian Hills Road, and that's about one, two, three, four, five homes. But I appreciate your thoroughness and expertise of analyzing all of this. This particular street, and I think, and I know that this home will make it one of the more premier streets in this area. It's just unbelievable what's going on on that lakeside of the area. And there'll be at least two more different, one's a two-acre that's next to us, and then a one-acre lot that will be building new homes. So I guess I do like this house. I'm glad I don't have to clean the windows, but it sure meets with my approval. And the one thing I like is when I walk my dog down the street, I can... And the one thing I like is when I walk my dog down the street, I can look over and see the lake and not have a big monster home there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn. Other comments? Come on up.
My name is Dave Swenson. I live on, at 6616 Pawnee Road, just around the corner from this gentleman. We're looking forward to have new neighbors over there also. My only question is, has really nothing to do with this particular property, but if the setback from the lake is, a 12-foot variance is having, had lake property in the past, 12-foot variance is fairly significant. My question is, is would that variance be as easily granted if you were building a new structure versus replacing a structure? The conversation has been more relative. This house is going to be a foot further back than the other one, still 12-foot closer than what it would be if it was a new house. So, my question is, and I have a reason for asking this down the road in the future, but is it the same variance because, if it was a new structure versus another structure? You know, one, you're replacing one, so are you getting the variance easier than you would if you were building a new one? The second thing was your question about public access. I'm kind of a lake fanatic, and if you look up this lake on the DNR, I believe it states there is a public access. Whether that's true or not, I don't know, but it says, "Public access, east side." And I don't know if that goes way back, or whether I read something incorrectly, but this was, being that I just bought two new kayaks and live close to there, I looked it up, and it did say that. And I'm thinking where that little pond comes out. If I'm not mistaken, that is Hennepin County property, and I could be wrong on that, but right where it comes by the road, and you see people putting kayaks in there all the time. So, I'm thinking there could possibly be a public access, but I could be totally wrong. So, anyway.
Mr. Swenson.
My question about the variance, I'd like to know if that's the same for a new structure versus one that's.
And Mr. Swenson, can you remind me again, what was your address?
6616 Pawnee Road.
Okay.
Just around the corner from the lake.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Last call. All right. Seeing no further comments, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing. And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Pose, same sign. All right. The public hearing is closed. We'll bring the discussion back to the planning commission, maybe to take that last question first. Carrie and Chris, do you have a perspective on whether new or replacement is treated differently with respect to a request for a variance?
If you were replacing an existing nonconforming patio, say, for instance, you can replace that in the exact same footprint as it sits today. You don't need a variance. But if you were to expand that nonconforming patio or structure, you would need a variance. So, or a tear-down and rebuild, starting over.
And so, once you're expanding, then, the analysis is the same for whether it's a new one or it's a.
Correct.
Replacement of an existing, not an exact replacement, but a new home on a different, on the same line?
That's right.
Okay.
Commissioner Grable.
Two points. I raised the question about public access simply because the last time we had an issue with a variance with respect to a waterway, we were dealing with a waterway that had public access, the creek, and we did grant the variance in that case. With respect to Commissioner Forrest's comment about the 75-foot setback imposed by, or mandated by the DNR, which resulted from a rulemaking proceeding, it seems to me that the DNR imposed or made a rule that applied statewide, one-size-fits-all. Had they wanted, in that rulemaking proceeding, if they were really concerned about variances, they could have provided that no municipality has the ability to grant a variance to that 75-foot standard, but they did not do that. The City of Dinah does have the right, under the law, to grant variances to that 75 feet. So, while it is a concern, I think, I think the fact is that a variance is not, a variance process is not foreclosed on the 75-foot lakeside setback.
Along those lines, Carrie, it strikes me, we had one of these just at our last meeting, and I thought it was a 50-foot. So, why is this 75 when that was 50? Or Chris, whichever.
It's based on the classification of the lake. The DNR has set up natural environment lakes or general environment lake. This is a natural environment lake, so that has a greater setback. That's the 75-foot.
And this would be a greater setback than it was from the creek on the one that's been referenced earlier as well?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Forrest.
I agree with Commissioner Grable that we have the right to make, you know, to grant a variance. However, I'm having difficulty seeing, what is the practical difficulty when you're building a new home, and, you know, you're starting from scratch in complying with that variance, with that 75-foot setback? I think it's a really cool-looking project. I like it. I like it the way it is right now, but I'm really having, I'm really struggling with the fact that I don't think we're meeting the criteria in order to grant the variance from the lake setback. I'm also struggling with the CUP thing. I'm not thrilled with the whole CUP approach to the height of the main floor of the house as it is, and I do recognize that we have a problem with the, when we have a multi-level home that has an entrance different than the main-level floor and all of those things. Those are the things we need to address. But once again, we put in place a CUP process that says you must meet the first, one of the first three criteria, and it meets none. So, what we're pretty much doing is going with the subjective, it meets the character of the neighborhood, and saying that's good enough. We aren't, I think we need to at least evaluate and get something, some findings in the minutes that really clearly articulate how this fits in with those first three criteria.
I'm less distressed by the, although I was temporarily confused by the CUP variance. I'm less distressed by it for a couple of reasons. One, I don't think that this was the kind of lot we had in mind when we were putting that in place. I mean, really, the purpose of that was to keep people from gaming the system by raising the finished first floor way above what existed and then towering over their neighbors. And both the design of the house and the topography of this area, I don't think that's a threat either way. I think we're not looking at a raise of the finished first floor so that it can have a higher view. It's already got a pretty nice high view. So, I'm not too worried about that. I'm, I am, I'm a little more struggling with the setback variances, and my thinking on that is that I do really like the design, and I like the way it's kind of complementing the topography and fitting in, and I worry, what's got me leaning toward granting the setback variances is that they could build within the envelope, but they could build another just towering house that, you know, really is a different kind of look. And I want to be supportive of this kind of design that I think fits in so well, if we can figure out a way to do that. So, I'd welcome further thoughts from my colleagues.
Commissioner Platter.
I'd say the same thing. I think it's a nice-looking home, and it really takes advantage of the topography and everything there, but as I mentioned before, I just, I'm really struggling with the lake setbacks that it seemed like essentially just ignored to me and said, well, we're going to design what we want here, and, you know, there's all different shutting out, which is fine, but it all goes towards the lake beyond the setback. So, I was just, and looking up the setbacks, and this is from the DNR website, "Structure setbacks help protect the water quality. Scenic value of Minnesota lakes providing space for a buffer area of trees, shrubs, and other vegetation along the shoreline. Capable of filtering sediment runoff. Capturing nutrients and sediment before they reach the lake maintains or improves water quality, thereby enhancing property values. The other reason for the setback requirements to maintain or enhance aesthetic value of the lakeshore for those citizens recreating in the lake itself. Homes and buildings that meet the setback requirement also decrease the visibility of the building from people recreating on the lake because natural vegetation potential between those. The potential additional screening of the structure provides a natural and undisturbed setting for other lakeshore owners in retreating and recreating on the lake." So, I know it's an urban area, but to me, to come back and, and this is, it's not insignificant that it's, you have over 30 feet for the deck out there, the pavers, as well as you're building an additional area of the building out into the, I know it's not, it's within that, the same distance from the lake, but you're building a substantially larger area of the house towards the lake. So, in those two respects, like I said, I like the idea that you have here, but I can't support this because of the, because of the lakeshore distance and the setback that's impinged upon.
Commissioner Grable.
I might be persuaded by that argument if this was, in fact, a public lake with public access, but it appears that it's not. And we did grant the variance for the creek, which clearly is a public facility, and so...
But you voted against that one.
I did. I voted against it.
I was going to ask.
For that reason, because it was a public, it was a public benefit, and I don't see the public benefit here. The people that are benefiting from this are the people around the lake, and the neighbors there have spoken in favor of this proposal. The practical difficulty issue may be satisfied by the reason that the applicant is clearly attempting to comply with or meet the current topography of the lot. I mean, they could, they could chop off the top of the hill and do what they want and build their three-story McMansion, but this is clearly a very sensitive, sensitive to the lake, sensitive to the topography, sensitive to the neighbors proposal, and I think it's worthy of our consideration.
Commissioner Forrest, then, I'll come to Commissioner Platter. Give you a minute to cool down.
Well, just to counter that, I mean, generally, we granted that one before, but precedent plays no part in granting a variance, so let's erase that from our minds, and let's look at this one fresh, and...
My vote notwithstanding?
Yeah, your vote notwithstanding. And the DNR rules aren't just for aesthetic purposes, they're also to maintain the quality of the lake for the community as a whole. You know, it's, I don't want you to say that. And so, I think, you know, let's start fresh with this one, and in our considerations regarding this. And thank you, Commissioner, or Chair Staunton, for articulating the CUP rationale, so we can get that in the record as well.
You're welcome. Commissioner Platter.
As I say, I respectfully disagree with the comment that it matters if it's public or private, because it is a natural resource regardless, that we need to protect and improve water quality, and that's the reasoning why the DNR did this. There's nothing in here that public or private makes, it doesn't say anything, public or private. So, I'm not, I don't, I don't agree with that.
So, let me ask Commissioner Platter in particular, would you be, and granted, it's not what's in front of us, but would, I don't hear you having much trouble with the front yard setback. It's the lakeside setback that you're more distressed by. So, if the whole thing moved toward the street, would you be more favorably inclined?
Yes, I would be.
Okay.
Further comments? Commissioner Shear.
This is sort of my neighborhood. I'm very familiar with this lot, the home and the acreage, and I've been wondering when it would be developed by somebody. I've been watching it for a while as I wander around the neighborhood. I have a really favorable impression of the entire presentation. I, the 28-foot building height, extremely attractive and desirable for the amount of square footage they're getting, and especially in relation to all the neighbors on the cul-de-sac and across the street. The adherence to the topography, I find extremely appealing, and the overall design is very attractive. I personally believe when you, when you put something that's this contemporary in an area that doesn't have a lot of contemporary homes, it, part of its appeal is the way it fits into the topography and doesn't scream in anybody else's face that's there with another style of home in the neighborhood. Interesting, Mr. Chair, I didn't have much of an issue with the first three items, the variances. I got stuck on number four, which was the distance from the lake, and I'm hoping we can have some additional discussion about that, and see if we can come up with some kind of a reasonable response to that, because I think overall, the project is really outstanding, and I would like to see it proceed.
Commissioner Forrest.
I also just wanted to add, when we're looking at a project, I'm concerned when we start saying, well, look at what, think about what they could build there instead, instead of just, this is what's before us right now. And I, I don't think we should take into consideration, it's kind of like, well, they could build a McMansion, or they, look what they're going to do instead if we grant this. I'm, that concerns me a great deal when we start, you know, our analysis goes in that direction. But I, as well, am, I like this a lot. I like the way they're in, you know, not only complementing the topography, but they're taking advantage of it in a wonderful way for the home. I do struggle with the setback, especially to the lakeside. That's my big, big thing as well. So, I don't know if, I don't know where we're at as a commission, but I think that, you know, as it is with variances, we can put, grant variances and put additional conditions on them. I don't know what that would be right now. I don't, we haven't gone in that direction. And I also struggle with the fact that if this is denied, then it's denied, and I don't know if there's, if we are heading in that direction, it may be wiser for the application to be withdrawn and come back. I'm just, just saying, because I'm concerned, I don't want to, there's a lot of thoughtfulness that's gone into this, and I just, I don't know where we're at as a commission. I'm just hearing some concerns.
Mr. Dean, could you come up for just a minute? So, here's my, so I think we're kind of...
Can I say something that I think is missing?
Absolutely. So, come, okay.
If you could put up...
And you are?
I am the owner of the properties, Malcolm Lipke.
Welcome.
Putting the house up. But if you could put up the bird's-eye view of the entire topography of the lake, one issue that we had when we were designing it, and trying to be sensitive to all the neighbors around us, when Christian pointed out how we tried to spin the house and the lot, to both gain the best out of the topography, which is rolling terrain kind of topography, we also, Christian first oriented differently within the setback. The problem that gave us was with the neighbor directly across the lake from us, not that far, looking right at us, and he voiced some concerns as well, is suddenly our house is facing...
I don't have the entire...
But doesn't have, you can see it right there. It's that house.
Yeah, that's me. It's the one across the...
When you, when you go within our narrow setback lines, and if you see the setback line on the hill there, where the old line was, it causes to orient the house looking right at that house.
So, hang on one second, because I can't see your finger on the screen. There we go. All right. So, that's the house that you're referring to?
Right. And we thought, to trying to be sensitive to the neighbors around us, besides trying to gain access to the best topography, it made more sense to orient it more north, facing across the lake, so we didn't look at anybody across the lake, and they don't look into our house. And we don't, since we're high up on a hill, and they're kind of at a lower topography, it felt better to them and us to orient the house away from there, but it causes to go over that setback line and have more lake setback come into play. If we went back with the setback, we'd go back looking right at that house again.
So, how many...
See what I'm saying?
When you oriented it, was it turned like 90 degrees? Was that the idea? Or it was turned 45 degrees?
It was originally turned within the setback on the lakeside, but that pushes it more northeast, facing that house directly across the lake. When we orient the other way, it goes over the setback, which, you're right, comes into play with the lake, but then it gains privacy for him as well as us, because we're just going right to the lake. So, in trying to kind of be sensitive to everybody around us, including the neighbors down below and across the street, it causes to go over that setback. We would have liked to have a flat topography and be able to get within that setback line. We would have liked to have a flat topography and be able to get within that setback line, or move it closer to the street. We just didn't have that luxury. You know, if you're saying the setback on the lake is the problem, we're pushed with that front yard setback as well.
So talk to me about that for a second, because that was the inquiry, because it seems like we're, I'm sensing a comfort level with three of these variances. It's the lakeside one that people seem to be struggling with here in the commission.
Right.
So, and I realize that when you lay this out, you try to make your variances as little as possible. So the question I wanted to explore with you is, could you, was there a reason that you didn't look for bigger variances on the, on the street side as opposed to the lakeside? Is there something about where it's set? Or would you be open to moving that closer to the street?
Well, I would accept that. On the front side facing the street, there's the largest, highest knob right in front of the house. When you push the house out towards the street, now you're running into that big hill.
Oh.
That's the highest part of the land that you're gonna have to shave off again to get bedrooms in there.
So you've got a topography issue in front of the house?
Right.
... bedroom, where you have a kind of crest of the hills there, it's a beautiful like little knob of the hill there, and we wanted to stay away from that.
We wanted to really orient it like this nest, right in there on the hill.
Kind of wrapping around.
There's a natural sighting for it, it seems like, that seems to fit the best. And, but we knew going into it that it caused setback problems. On that corner, as you oriented more northward, it caused us to go over that corner. We rolled it around time and time and time again, but we really struggled with that.
I mean, as an architect in this profession, you know, variances are there for great reasons, you know, and we, we don't want to disregard them, they're important. But, you know, we always look at it from the spirit of the, the intent of the code. And, you know, with, you know, a couple of feet on the Indian Hill side and the little terraces, those, I don't want to say those are minor, but, you know, we're trying to work within the spirit of the code. And, you know, we don't have a full facade, like a whole street front facade that's, you know, fronting, you know, the, the street in a way. And so we do have a spindly house kind of fragmented, making outdoor spaces. You know, we're just trying to work within the intent of the code, and we're not trying to go beyond that in a really heavy way. And so I guess, you know, we could have gone further toward Indian Hills Road, but, you know, the, we feel the road's really an important thing. I mean, architecturally, street fronts, the way a house presents itself to the street is really important to us. And there's kind of this park-like, I think, quality to this site, and it's been kind of an amenity to the neighborhood. And if you've seen what Mr. Lipke's done on his property on Lake of the Isles, it's beautiful, it became a neighborhood amenity. It's just, it's like a little park. And so the future of this, you know, has that promise, you know, that we've set the house back, but the neighborhood's gonna get this amazing little park-like setting. And so we've created these south courtyards and things that front Indian Hills Road. So we think we're gonna be a good neighbor. And to do that, we've pushed the house a little bit closer to the lake. And with the terrace, you know, we've, we've really made that a low-level, at-grade outdoor space, and hopefully, we can work with landscaping to make that permeable, help with water quality, things like that, in terms of soil, or I'm sorry, stormwater retention. You know, we do have a green roof on the garage. Again, you know, in terms of permeable site things, that's a strategy that's very sustainable to have a green roof that'll help with stormwater retention. So there are things that we're doing, we're trying to be green and sensitive. But I just want to say philosophically how we, how we work with the variances. We understand they're important, but we try to understand the intent of them as well.
This has been very helpful. And the, I see now on the topography on the site plan, the knob or the knoll that you're talking about in front of the house as well. Commissioner Carr.
I just had a quick question about the stone terrace. What is the surface going to be of that? I mean, it said stone, but is it going to be permeable? Will water be able to run through it? Or is it going to be a concrete slab?
I'm not entirely sure, but I'm sure it will be permeable. I'm sure the water will have a runoff. What we've seen on the lakeside, because the terrain crests up to a point, water doesn't run off down the cliff, it runs to the sides. It goes down, it would be west, it kind of has a natural grade going down that way, and it rolls east, kind of in between this valley going down that way. It doesn't roll over the hill going down there.
Well, one of the, the reason I ask that is, in looking at the structure setback requirements that the DNR has set up for lake fronts, the, the structural setbacks are designed to maintain water quality. And one of the things by building structures closer to the water, apparently you increase soil compaction. If there's impervious structures, that can affect runoff. So I was curious what the surface, what the materials are going to be, how you would perhaps prevent additional or different types of runoff using the surface treatment that you select. The other purpose of a structural setback is for recreational use. That addresses the question of whether there's public access, which doesn't appear to be an issue. The other one is the aesthetic value. And again, your flat surface is not, certainly not an aesthetic issue for anyone across the lake. They're not seeing that. So my primary concern was water quality. And again, the DNR regulations appear to say, if a variance is granted, you take the interests of the landowner and you weigh that against the need to protect the lake.
Certainly, and that's the way I feel too.
Yeah.
You know, I think that after we bought the lot last spring, we spent all last summer walking the lots with tree specialists and conservations, kind of finding out which trees were, needed to be taken down. The lot we inherited when we bought it was neglected for decades by the previous owners. They had fallen on poor health and it got overgrown, neglected, they didn't cut down any trees. And consequently, they had been given a notice by the city of Indiana to start taking down the buckthorn, which had grown to tree size. I didn't even know buckthorn could get that high. And we went in and walked the entire lot, looking at what needed to be addressed from a conservation standpoint as well. And we left everything in place as far as tree roots on that hill, so particularly, there is no runoff. But we're planning on replanting that entire hill with native species and with material that could prevent any runoff that, as living on the lake, we don't want either. And we have a pump on 6608 that's run by the Home Association that we maintain turning off and on, that keeps water at a certain level and maintains the quality of the water there as well. So we're trying to inherit this lot and take care of it as the best stewards we possibly could be. And we're open to suggestions and we're sensitive to everything that anybody has to say about stewardship of it and conservation and maintaining that.
Commissioner Forrest.
In the variance we granted on Minnehaw Creek, we did impose a requirement that the homeowner worked with a professional landscaper that dealt with protecting water quality. And I think that would be helpful to me, is if we put a requirement in the variance that required something similar. I'm not sure exactly what the parameters would be, maybe we could discuss that if anybody's interested. But at the very least, I would want to see some guarantee that things are being mitigated.
So I'm not sure we'll get through it. What happened on the last one is we actually continued it, if you recall, because there is all these open items, there was previously, the other one I'm speaking, and this one too, there's, there's no landscaping plan here. There's nothing showing us what, what, you know, you can say permeable pavers, we don't see anything here, we don't see any landscaping, we don't see anything that would potentially mitigate it. I'm not saying I would pull forward either anyway, but I'm just saying there's nothing else here that's showing what you're doing to, to get a variance for that waterside or for the lakeside. I don't see, there's been nothing done to, to show, I know you're saying the right things and I, maybe you'll do the right things, but there's nothing to show us or enforce that has been addressed here. So...
Let me go, Commissioner Potts, and then...
Okay, thank you. Along these same lines, I have much more heartburn with the lakeside setback than any of the others. And definitely appreciate the, the design work here, it's really elegant in terms of the house. It's still very difficult to, to look at that lakeside and not want to have a solution. I think Commissioner Staunton has, you know, an interesting question. Can you move that whole house southward enough to avoid the lake setback? I think for my part, I'd be willing to grant the other setback variances required to do that. And then additionally, when I look at this, the site plan with the, the little knoll at 906 feet, when I look at the impact on that of moving the house southward compared to the impacts of the excavation, the quantity of excavation you're gonna do to create your lower level on this site, different than what's there now, and the extensive replanting that you just described, dealing with that knoll seems like a fairly minor issue if it solves the other problems. So I think, you know, what you're hearing here are some thoughts about possibly continuing this to make some minor revisions rather than put it to a vote tonight. And so I just want to, I guess, emphasize and build on what Commissioner, or Chair Staunton said and make those suggestions.
Commissioner Shear, and then I'll come to Commissioner Graeble, and then Commissioner Carr.
Well, I just, we could certainly add conditions, whether that was this evening or at a future date, that would speak to landscaping, professional landscaping consultants and plans, permeable patio materials, and anything else that, you know, the commissioners are interested in. I mean, I, I don't think our hands are necessarily tied in that regard. Those conditions could easily be added, if we chose to go that direction.
Commissioner Graeble.
I would agree. I think we could put some conditions on the variance that would, again, if you, the staff has recommended approval subject to certain conditions. One of them is final grading and drainage plan subject to review and approval of the city engineer prior to issuance of a building permit. I believe we could amend that, modify it to say, including a plan for water runoff created as a result of the terrace, that variance, that would, in a landscape, in an associated landscaping plan, that would not have an adverse impact on water quality of the lake.
Commissioner Graeble.
We've had indication from the applicant, and nothing to the contrary, that the water runoff does not go towards the lake. Now, if somebody's got some other evidence that the water runoff is going to go to the lake, then I think we consider that. But in the absence of that, I think it's fair to assume that the water runoff will not go towards the lake. The fact that...
Yeah.
They, they just said that the water does not, it goes apparently into the cul-de-sac and the other side. And the other thing, as far as conservation, they've got a whole lot next door that they bought that they can't do anything with. So I, you know, the DNR, for whatever reason, a few years ago, said, we're gonna scrap whatever setback requirements we had because some lake up in northern Minnesota someplace bothers us, so we're gonna make every lake the same in the state of Minnesota. But they did not say that you can't grant variances to that. And I think it's within our discretion, and when you have an opportunity to approve something that would be good for the neighborhood and good for the city, I think, you know, the Supreme Court a few years ago made a ruling that made variances virtually impossible to get. And the legislature changed that so variances could be granted. And now, it seems like it's harder to get a variance now these days than, than what it was before. So this is a good project, and it seems to me that we can mitigate the, the impact on the lake by requiring landscaping, put a condition on the variance that they have to have a professional landscaper work with them. And I think we should do that and approve this variance.
Did I hear that as a motion?
I would, I would move that approval subject to a condition that they work with a landscape person to...
Permeable?
And, and provide permeable, and provide permeable surface for the patio areas.
Is there a second in that motion?
Second.
All right, so further discussion. Commissioner...
Conditions of variance from the DNR Shoreland Protection. Variance is defined statute as any modification or verification of official controls where determined that by reason of unique circumstances, the strict enforcement of the official controls would cause unnecessary hardship. I don't see that necessary hardship here. Only on rare occasions, however, should the local government grant a variance request on shoreline. I'm not sure how this fits within the rare and the unnecessary hardship.
Well...
Even, even under the Supreme Court's ruling that you could not grant a variance, there would be circumstances where variances could be granted, and that would be because of the topography of a lot that made it virtually impossible to build. Here, they're trying to preserve the topography, that's why they're not, you know, in Appalachia, they strip mine and they cut the top off of hills, and they're trying to avoid something like that in this case, and I think we should go with them on that.
Just, Carrie, a point of information, or Chris. The, the variance is from our ordinance, correct? So I know there is a model DNR ordinance that was presented to cities, but there, each city has adopted these ordinances, and so the, the variances from our, I mean, I guess this goes to Commissioner Platter's question. I don't think we're using a standard in the DNR rules to evaluate this variance. We're using the state statute and our code for granting variances from zoning ordinances.
But we adopted, but we adopted their code, the DNR's code.
Well, I guess...
We adopted their setback. So why would we have done that without the other piece?
Well, what I'm asking, I'm asking kind of a, really a legal question that, do you, I mean, Carrie and Chris, do you have a, I guess we have to, you know, we have to know what standard we're applying. And I hear Commissioner Platter saying that there might be a, I hear you suggesting there's a stricter standard in granting a variance from a lakefront setback than would be in our code. And I just, I think it's important that we clear that up before we act on this.
We are mandated by the DNR to adopt their 75-foot setback requirement. And it's as Commissioner Graeble stated, they've left it up to each individual city to grant variances from that standard. So we're granting a variance where the criteria that we're looking at are, it's our variance criteria. Their 75-foot setback requirement that we have, all cities across Minnesota have to adopt that same 75-foot setback.
So we can take perhaps their commentary into account, but it's not the standard that we're applying?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Forrest.
Well, I think that the text that Commissioner Platter was referring to may have been somewhat dated in that it, it mentioned the old standard for variances, which was a unique hardship versus what's currently a practical difficulty. But nonetheless, are we going to use variance as a tool to get around our code? Are we going to grant variances as exceptions based on the, on the criteria that put before us in state statute? And if we're going, you know, I...
Well, clearly the latter.
Well, clearly the latter. And, and so it has to be very clear in the findings. Now, I mean, I completely respect, like I said, I like this, but, you know, to say that the water runs this way or that way is not a hydrology report. It's, it's, here, say there's a 24-foot drop between that terrace and the, and the lake. So how can water go up, you know, in that situation?
It's not what the grades show either on there, so...
You mean...
Yeah, I mean, it goes, shows it'll go to the side and it'll go into the lake where it's lower, so...
And I don't think that just leaving some existing tree roots is going to mitigate the issue so much. I would like more specifics than use permeable stuff and, and work with somebody, because I think we need to have some proof that that's exactly what's going to be done. It's, it's a big project, and it's a cool project, and I think it merits doing it and setting an example of a good stewardship as well as, you know, with the lake as well as with the topography, which is, I love it when houses settle into the property, I just think it's great. So I, you know, I like it. I want to find ways to make this go forward, but I, I do want to see it done the right way.
So are you speaking, are you speaking in favor or against the motion?
I can't support it without...
Okay.
Specific conditions.
So it doesn't have enough in the conditions to...
Yeah.
Okay.
But I support it, in other words.
Commissioner Platter, can you hold for a second? Commissioner Carr had a comment.
I would like someone to repeat the motion to make sure I clearly understand it. This may address some of the issues related to what the conditions are. Carrie, could you, or would you be the person to restate what that motion is? Or Commissioner Graeble, would you like to restate that motion with the conditions? Or Commissioner Grable, would you like to restate that motion with the conditions?
The intent of my motion was to provide or require the landowner to work with landscape architects to develop a plan, a landscape plan, that will mitigate any runoff into the lake, should there be an instance where there will be runoff into the lake. I'm not convinced that there will be, based on what they've said, but if there is, the landscape architect is to develop the land, much as we did next to the creek.
And then...
Which I voted against.
We had specifics for it, too, though. We had a plan that was presented.
Well, fine, if you want to propose some specifics, propose some specifics.
I want them to propose the specifics.
Commissioner Carr.
I would support that concept, only I would add that those plans be submitted to the city engineer for review and approval, as part of the variance.
I thought that's what I said.
Okay.
So that would be an accept, to the extent that's an amendment, that's acceptable to the mover and to the secondary?
Yes.
All right.
I don't want to forget the permeability, either.
Permeable materials.
Right, permeable material on the patios and hard surface.
Okay.
How do we know if...
For some semblance of order here. Commissioner Forrest.
I just want to know how we know they're going to do that, or, or how we know that they, that it has been done once it's built. I mean, if we're going to put some conditions on here that are very specific to a very specific concern, I'd want some plan presented or something before us, as, as was done with the, with the creek property. We, they came back with a specific landscape plan, showing how things were going to be planted and graded and whatever, in order to protect the creek. And I think this is a large enough project that it's worth that extra effort.
Commissioner Carpenter.
I've had an evolution on this, listening to all this. You're going to have to do some kind of landscape plan anyway. We're all talking about it being done. So I don't know if it really matters, from your perspective, tell me if I'm wrong, whether you do it now or you do it later, but it seems to me that you run the risk rate now of possibly getting a variance denied, and you can perhaps guarantee a reverse outcome of getting it, in terms of getting it approved, if you decided that you wanted to go ahead and get the, the landscape plan done now, so that we could visit on this at our next meeting, and, and then possibly approve it at that point, if that was where people were headed.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, I mean, I think what's being discussed right now is whether or not, you know, we'd be requiring a landscape plan, and if so, how we'd be requiring it. You know, you know, one possibility is that we, is we simply say, "You've got to have a landscape plan, it's got to be approved by somebody." You don't know what the standard is that's going to, that that approval is going to take, so you, you may think you've done a wonderful plan, it goes to the, you know, the city engineer, and the city engineer says, "Well, I don't like some of this." And then you're, you're back in, back in the pot again.
A question I think is important to think of, too, is, that hill was there long before we ever bought the property, and that water was running down that hill long before we were over there. Now, the question the commission should look at is, is our project going to impact that more than it's been there for thousands of years, running down that hill? And are we going to cause drainage and runoff that's going to be more damaging, that's going to be more impactful in some kind of way, than is already there now, and we haven't done a thing to it?
I would add, we, we wouldn't want to do that anyways. I mean, we have flat roof house, you know, we don't have large gable roofs shedding, you know, half the roof area down, on one side or the other side, it's flat roof, so we're going to have the opportunity to locate scuppers, downspouts, in strategic areas where we can then control the water, because it's a flat roof house. So we're going to want to do due diligence, because we're going to want to control where the water's going, it's not going to be good for the house if water's running up against the basement. I think there could be a condition when we go through building permit review, where these things could be verified, that we do it, because we still have to go through and get a building permit. I don't know if that's a condition that could be applied to that, but there are certain checks that we have to go through still, to get a building permit. And one of those things is, I think, you know, obviously showing drainage. We're going to show where the water's running off the roofs, and things like that.
Are you playing out there?
I mean, we're happy to work with it. We want to make this project as sustainable as it can be, and be as good towards of the landscape.
Right.
So we're happy moving forward and doing whatever we have to do to do that. I mean, I think I can speak for the legislative side in that way.
Any suggestions are, you know, certainly taken into account, it'd be great.
Yeah, my, my, my question, though, is, is whether or not you're going to do, as part of the project, at any point in time, will you be doing a landscape plan?
Yes.
And so if you are going to do one, is there any reason why that landscape plan couldn't be done earlier, to give members of this panel a higher comfort level? Because they can then look at it and make a judgment from that?
Certainly, I would say it's an investment, you know, with another design professional coming in, not knowing whether we're approved to do that. So, you know, part of what we like to know is, you know, from the basic premise of what we're doing, is it meeting the spirit of the code? And then we can continue to develop that idea, versus saying, "We can't even do this, move the house back," you know, or something like that. I feel like with the conditions you would put forward, we can work with a landscape plan, and be informed of what we need to do then.
Yeah, I'm just not sure. I'm, what I'm trying to do is give you an opportunity for a clear path that would come, give enough people here a comfort level, where you can get a positive vote. You may still be able to get one, I don't know, but, but I'm sensing some resistance to that, and that may not, that may not make everybody else comfortable, so...
I'm, I'm just not sure the timing of what, that proposal of having the landscape plan before you, you know, at another time, meaning we're deferring...
So let's, so let's do this. We, we have a motion on the table, and the motion is to approve the variance with conditions. I think we should vote on the motion. If the motion passes, you have your variance, you're on your way. If the motion fails, then we can talk about what to do next. Because it's not a motion to deny right now, it's a motion to approve, and if the motion to approve fails, then we can talk about what to do next. Okay? So, is there further discussion before we vote on the motion? I think we'll need a roll call.
Commissioner Shear.
Aye.
Commissioner Platter.
Nay.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Nay.
Commissioner Carr.
Aye.
Commissioner Platter.
Nay.
Commissioner Forrest.
Nay.
Commissioner Grable.
Aye.
Chair Stottin.
So, the motion fails four to four. Trouble with even number. So, the way I'm reading the tea leaves, you need one more vote, and from what I'm hearing from my fellow commissioners who didn't vote for it, is that you might persuade them if there were more specifics, in terms of a landscape plan and kind of the impact on the lakefront. That might get you in a position where you can persuade one more commissioner to vote.
I'd certainly be willing to work with any professional landscaper, to ascertain all the problems of runoff, and issues that are, that are both aesthetic and environmental, but I'm worried about going off on tangents and not being productive with that.
So...
And coming back with a landscape plan that doesn't meet it, and we're stuck again. So, you know, I'm spending money going in different directions without any kind of...
I understand.
...real understanding.
So, so there's a couple of options. We, you know, we could proceed, and there could be another motion. I suspect the next motion will be a motion to deny, that may fall to the same four-four vote. We could continue this, we have another meeting in two weeks. You could bring something back, work with staff in between now and then, to bring something back that might be more specific in terms of the mitigation measures that you're proposing.
Can we, can we do that?
I think we can. That's what we did on the Minnehaw Creek one, isn't it?
We never took a vote, though.
We, we've taken a vote to deny the, to deny the application.
We just continued that one.
No, we haven't taken a vote to deny. We took a vote to, we took a vote to approve that failed.
All right, so, what's, so...
No, it's not the same. We haven't, we haven't recommended denial, we just have failed to recommend approval so far. There could be another motion. So what I'm saying is, we could have, one option is to have another motion, or a motion to deny. We could have a motion to continue until the next meeting, and give the applicant some opportunity to try and address those issues that seem to be hanging up the, the others.
Mr. Chair. If I could, I think, we, we've talked about landscape as one solution. The other would be to move at least the, the structure of the house 75 feet away from the lake. I think for my part, personally, to have both the structure and the patio within 75 feet is just too, too much for me, and I think some, some of the other commissioners. So that's one other solution.
Well, and so, so let's talk about that, because I don't want to send the applicant off to do work if none of the four nay votes will be persuaded by mitigation measures. So, I hear where Commissioner Potts is coming from, but if, if the others, then it's not, you know, then we might as well have our vote, and if you want to, you could appeal it to the city council.
Is the reasoning only, Commissioner Potts, that you think the house should be moved closer to the street, from that setback, and farther from the lake? I mean, I don't have a problem doing that, it just goes against all the setbacks from the houses all along Indian Hills Drive.
Right. I, I think the, the intent of the design by Mr. Dean can be realized by moving that house, the structure of the house, again, 75 feet back from the lake, and if that means you're seeking a greater variance on the street side, I would approve that, greater variance.
And then possibly going in that hill, then, that's above that, that knob shaving into that hill?
Yes, I would.
There's oaks on that hill, you're going to be losing all those big trees. I mean, I don't think you could really move that house farther towards the street, without impacting neighbors in a bigger way than we're doing now, going back closer to the lake. You know, right, if you come down Indian Hills Drive, coming towards our house, there's this big knob that shields our house from the lake, from the street, and from neighbors as well. As you get closer to the street with the house, moving off the lake, now you're really impacting more the neighbors, and you're getting into a tree issue, where you're going to start taking down that knob and losing bigger trees. And I think that's a worse solution than rotating it even towards the lake.
Okay. And I, I appreciate that, I'm not as familiar with the site as you are, and that's where a landscape plan would do a lot of good to see. I guess in terms of the setback issue, for me, the lake is far more critical than the other lot, lot line setbacks.
And I, and I, for my part, I was persuaded, when I realized the topography on the street side, that, that, because I initially thought the solution was just pull the, pull the house closer to the street, and then you don't have to wrestle with the 75-foot variance on the lakeside. But I'm, I'm persuaded that that topography is, is part of the rationale for why you wouldn't do that, so...
We've been so constricted in this entire design process, the topography.
Right.
We don't have a flat lot. We don't have the ability to do things with this lot, because the way it's set up, with a front side setback in the street, and a lakeside setback in back. To rotate the house and play with it in a way that doesn't affect anything. And we've, I think, tried the best way we possibly can, with the neighbors, with the topography, to put that house right in that spot. I think it severely compromises the terrain to move that house closer to the street. And I think our neighbors really complain about that. Because that knob there, it's Indian Hills, and there's a lot of big oaks right there, you'd be shaving down. Neighbors have a lot of problem with that. And it also becomes more of a house that's closer to the street, and more in the neighbor's face, as opposed to tucked back up on that hillside. But we've wrestled time and time again, for months, how do we place this house in there? We're now too close to the lake, I understand that, but then do you want to back off and go into the hill? It's a problem, and it's been really something that we've been tough to wrestle with.
I would make, I would make the case that environmental impact is more significant to take down more of the hill, than trying to find ways to work with stormwater retention and, and soil erosion. I think that's something that we have means and methods to, to get at, but taking more topography away from the site is something we can never go back on. So I feel like we have strategies in place, from design professionals, landscape professionals, to make a low-level terrace permeable, and as, as much as it wasn't there, I mean, obviously it sounds like the main concern is, is potentially the terrace, not the structure. And the fact that the terrace is at grade, there are so many ways to deal with that, that I feel like, even with those conditions, we could, you could have all kinds of confidence in us going through plan review and getting that built to a standard.
Well, I mean, all great points, and so, right now, we're at this kind of stage where we're at a bit of a stalemate on the commission, so I just want to figure out, you know, how to go forward. We could, you know, we could take another vote, but if we think that there's some, I don't, I don't want to send you on a wild goose chase if there's not any prospect of, of satisfying any of the nay votes, but I guess that's, the question in my mind is whether it's worth continuing it, or whether we just take a vote, and then if, if it fails, they can take it to the city council. Commissioner Forrest.
I'm, I'm, my concern is, I think that, I, again, I think it's, to put it in a nasty way, it's arrogance to think that you can just disregard the setbacks on the lakeside because the previous house was there. Like I said, I like the way it looks, I like the way it sits in the property, but you did select the envelope, you selected all of these things, you selected the orientation based on the neighbors across the lake, versus based on the impact on the lake. So, I'm, you know, I would like to see some mitigation take place. I don't care if it's orientation of the house, pulling the house in, you know, in, out, up, down, but...
But, so are you...
Or landscape.
Right, but I guess the question is whether, whether your mind would remain open to that, or whether, you know, two weeks from now, if they go through some hoops to show us some mitigation techniques, I'm not, I'm not asking you to cast that vote now, but I am asking you to, to tell them if, if that, you know, if you're not, if there isn't a circumstance where, where that mitigation is going to satisfy you.
You know me so well, so rule bound. I, the purpose of the, the 75-foot setback is there to protect the quality of the lake, as well as the aesthetics, and I think I would, I would need to be convinced, and I think there, there are certainly ways to do that, based upon some concrete mitigation measures that we then put into a requirement for approval for the variance. But we can't, we can't say what those are, you know, permeable pavers, well, that'll help maybe, but we don't know what, you know, exactly how that's going to work. I'd like to see something convincing, as far as what's going to be done to justify all that extra square footage that's being put into that lake setback, because it's large.
Yeah, Chair Stottin, members of the commission, just want to remind you that this is a conditional use permit, you're making a recommendation, this isn't a final action. So this will go to the city council, regardless of, of the action here, because it's a conditional use permit...
But it isn't, really, is it?
...attached to a variance.
What's the conditional use permit?
To the one-foot rule, the raising the...
But they're not getting, they can't get the conditional use permit.
They need variance, so it's a conditional use permit.
They're going to get a conditional use permit with a variance?
With variances. So, as you remember, anytime a variance is attached to a conditional use permit or a site plan, you're making a recommendation to the city council. So you have a couple of options, you could, if you table it in that you want to see that landscape plan before you forward on a motion to the city council, you could do that. Or you could add that as a condition, that the plan be submitted prior to the city council reviewing that, and then they would take that into consideration before they take action.
And, and just to finish that but for you, and in either case, whether we approve or disapprove, they can go on to the city council and have this reviewed.
Correct. As it stands now, it's a motion that failed, so it's, in effect, a denial. But either way, the city council is, takes the final action.
Okay, thank you.
So...
Where do we stand?
So, so, I'm waiting for one of my colleagues to make a motion. So I guess the choices are either, you know, I guess at this time, it'd be either appropriate for a motion to deny, or a motion to, or a motion to continue.
Why do we need a motion? We had a motion to approve it, it didn't pass. We don't need any more motions.
It's not denied, there hasn't been, we haven't recommended deny.
The approval or the recommendation of the city council is that the thing failed on a four-to-four vote.
It's in there, wow.
What other motion are you going to have?
Well, you don't have to. If you, if, if I don't have a motion, then I guess I, you know, how would we proceed?
I'll make a motion to deny it.
Motion to deny, it was four to four.
Any seconds?
Fail to deny?
Well, I know, but I mean, that's...
Would it be passed to deny, if it's failed four to four?
To me, it's failed on...
To me, it's failed already.
Maybe we should send it to the DNR and see what they have to say.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know how to even work this in. I am intrigued by Carrie's comment though, that, the idea that when it gets to the city council, it would have the plan attached. And I do think that would enhance the presentation that she would make to the council regardless of how the vote goes here. I don't know any way to incorporate that if we don't pass some sort of an amendment or some sort of a.
Well, what you could do is you could make a motion to continue and ask the applicant to come back with mitigation plans at our next meeting that we could then act on and make a recommendation to the council.
I don't know why the applicant would want to do that.
Wouldn't they just go to council?
If they have to go to council anyway.
Well, then.
They may come back with all that and just get the same vote here. I'm not saying they will or won't, but.
All right, so.
Goes to council.
So let's, if, if people are determined to move on without further formal action on this, then give me a motion to close this, close this matter.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Shearer.
I would like to say to the applicant that since the next step will be you're going to the city council, I assume that I would suggest, I do think it, as I said a minute ago, I think it would really enhance your application to take into consideration some of the observations here and go prepared with some formal plans or other types of documentation that would, you know, further explain those circumstances to the members of the council as they vote.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, I think what we've done is we've narrowed it. There seems to be pretty good consensus on the three variances. It's the, it's the lakefront that has, I mean, you can hear what the discussion is and the council members will watch and they will have heard the whole discussion as well. So you'll want to be prepared to, either with supplemental materials or explanations or presentation that, that really addresses this issue because I'm sure it'll come up as a discussion.
Are all aspects denied or are there partial, like some aspects approved and some not approved?
Well, so, so since we're making a recommendation, they will see the recommendation that there was, there was a motion to approve it and that it failed on a four to four vote and the minutes and the, and the recording will reflect all of this discussion. And I assure you that they're going to be familiar with the fact that we were pretty comfortable through staff as well, that we were pretty comfortable with the three variances. It was the lakefront one that really, we couldn't get over the top on. And so anything you can do between now and then, I echo Commissioner Shearer's advice to you that you're probably going to want to address that issue.
Yeah, and to piggyback on that, the council heard, will hear the condition that was added as part of the motion. And I think they're going to have a hard time acting on that without seeing that plan in front of them. So we'll work with you to develop that landscape plan and the conditions that were discussed.
Okay, that sounds great.
So we have no further discussion, so all in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. All right. Thank you very much for working. We, we just picked this up. I know you've been working with it for years, so.
It's okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Michaels. We just thought, since you're coming back to see us again, we just put on a little bit of a show for you before you even got here. So next up is reports and recommendations, sketch plan review for 6500 France Avenue. Groundhog Day.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the commission, a site you're all extremely familiar with, kitty corner from Fairview Southdale Hospital. You recall that the applicant has received approval to build a five-story, just over a hundred thousand square foot medical office building that had an attached four and five level parking ramp. This is a look at the site plan. There was a green roof attached to the building and then again, the parking ramp on the west side. The applicant is before you this evening for a sketch plan consideration to change the use. They've partnered with Ebenezer. You're familiar with the addition that they recently did on York Avenue. Ebenezer affiliated with Fairview Hospital. So the change in use is for repurposing this for senior housing. There would be a hundred and nine, the senior assisted living housing units and a hundred transitional and memory care unit. Some of those transitional care suites or rooms would be affiliated with the hospital and possibly with Twin City Orthopedic that's next to the parking ramp on 65th. I, I'll let Mr. Michaels go through and present some of the details of how that operation would work. Might note that there is a pedestrian skyway that would connect to the parking ramp across 65th. Again, that would tie into that use with the hospital and potentially Twin City Orthopedic. The, the way that this could proceed, if this is something that planning commission and council looks favorably on, is reconciliation with the comprehensive plan. Currently, it's guided for regional medical use. And within that description in the comprehensive plan, there's no mention of housing associated with regional medical. Also, another thing that we need to consider is the density. Just taking the hundred and nine units, that's a density of about forty-six units an acre. And that's, that's at the very high end of our density range for high-density apartments that have developed in Edina. If you add in the memory care and skilled nursing, the density increases up to eighty units an acre. That's way over anything that we've ever approved in the city. So density is a concern. Now, given the impact to the roadways, those kind of things would be less with this type of use. A traffic study is, is actually underway. WSB is updating some of those numbers. But again, based on the parking, you remember the five ramp, five-level ramp that was associated with a hundred thousand square feet of medical office? With the housing units associated here, the number of parking stalls that's required is far less. It would be all done with underground parking. So a little bit different impacts. There's a couple of options to proceed with comprehensive plan amendment. We could reconfigure some of the language in the regional medical district that would allow housing. There's an FAR maximum in regional medical of 1.0. The FAR proposed here would be 2.1, so quite a bit over. Now, FAR, I'm not sure if that's a true, a fair measurement for housing. It's more associated with commercial and office type use. Again, it's traffic impacts, those kind of things. So whether that's a true way to regulate the density, we would have to take a look at that. Another option would be to designate this for office residential where both of those uses would be permitted. We again run into the FAR requirements and we're still going to have to reconcile that density issue. So that, that's the hurdle that we would have to look at as part of a comprehensive plan amendment that would be associated with this project. Just in general, some of staff's comments, this use seems, would seem to fit better. Again, tying to the, the medical campus to the north. The traffic impact is less. I think that would bear out as part of the traffic study that's, that's underway. In some of my initial conversations with Mr. Rickert, he did indicate that the traffic would be less of an impact compared to the medical office that's been approved. I think this pedestrian connection would be an important link to require, especially given some of the densities that they're proposing here, to make that connection to the regional medical. So with that, I can stop. We can, I can answer any questions that you might have or Mr. Michaels could add to the presentation.
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions? Commissioner Gravel, then Commissioner Platter.
Carrie, help me, I'm, I'm, maybe I misunderstood something, but are they abandoning the medical office portion of this project?
They still have, it's, it's still an approved plan. They have two years from the date of that approval to build the project. So if this doesn't, if this isn't well-received by the city, I, it's my understanding, I think they would still.
But if, if this plan was, was adopted, is, is this entire area housing or are they not going to have office?
It would, yes, it would be entirely housing.
Okay. I didn't understand that. Thank you.
Commissioner Platter.
So just help me understand and maybe one else, how logistically this would work? So if we went with this plan, it would go back and basically be a re-PUD, right?
Yes, we're starting all over.
Starting over, okay.
They're going through the sketch plan process first here, then they would come back and it would be preliminary rezoning with the comprehensive plan amendment. And then they would have to come back for a third step essentially for final rezoning, final site plan.
So in theory, nothing that's been approved to date would apply. I mean, there's a kind of a precedent, but if you're, if you're going back through that, would you revert to the PUD or would you revert to the code even before that?
It would be an amendment to the PUD, so we'd have to rewrite the regulations.
Okay.
And then the comprehensive plan amendment.
So it's again, two-step process, comp plan and then?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
And I want to mention, and the applicant will go through this, there's, remember the retail that was proposed on that first level? They still would have some service, retail, possibly coffee shop on the end. But instead of more general retail for the public, it would really be geared toward residents of that building and maybe people who office nearby to walk over and get a sandwich at the corner. And again, some of those things would come out as part of the traffic study and the review in the second, second and third phases.
Okay. Further questions for Carrie? Thank you. Oh, sorry.
I just have a question about the potential skyway. Does that need a variance in the future from the city? Or is that, can that just go in if both properties agree to it?
Well, that's a good question. The skyway that went in across France, I'm not sure the process that was gone through there, that crossed a county road, so there had to be some county approvals there. It's essentially a zero setback right to the lot line. That's a, that's an excellent question that we, something we'd have to address.
Have we done skyways before other than that one across France? I can't think of any other place where we have.
I can't think of any other.
That's a good question, all right.
Potentially with that York, remember the sketch plan we had last month where we looked at that? But that was on the same property.
Right, we haven't approved one, right, that's gone over a street.
Right.
Okay. All right. Mr. Michaels, Mr. Farr, welcome back.
Chairman and members of the planning commission, my name is Steve Michaels of Land Development. My address is 3600. Minnesota Drive, Edina, Minnesota. It is a pleasure to be before you this evening as we discuss a new use for the 6500 France Avenue site. During our research over the past months, we have been talking with Fairview and Ebenezer about their vision certainly for this medical, regional medical area. As we discussed with Fairview and Ebenezer, we determined that there is a real need for specialized senior care services in our community. This particular site is unique and different compared to some of the other potential senior facilities in our area in that it's next to the Fairview Southdale Hospital. The new facility will be operated by Ebenezer and that, and they are owned by Fairview Healthcare Systems. Ebenezer is a leader in the market for innovative design and especially their cost-effective housing alternatives. They've recently completed the York Gardens, which is an outstanding project that's won two national awards. It's a unique building. I've toured it twice and each time we go through it, we see something a little bit new or different. The building is a hundred percent leased and Susan Farr will give us an outline of what's made that project special. This evening, we would like to discuss with you the new use and also the revised massing of the new structure. I would like to emphasize a couple of points that Planner Teague has mentioned. Our new building will replicate the prior approved structure in a number of areas. We'll keep the same height, the same setbacks, the green roof, the exterior materials and the numerous streetscape features. We do have a long list of our green initiatives that we went through on our last application and we can make those available also. Ed Farr will speak in a moment here and he'll outline some additional details of the project. Luigi Bernardi is here from Aurora Investments. He will continue to own the building so he can answer any long-term management issues on the project. Aurora has purchased both of the land sites and the first building has been taken down and the second building should come down soon. So right now, I'd like to introduce Susan Farr. She's the Vice President of Development for Ebenezer. There is no relationship there with the architect. She'll present the vision for Ebenezer and some of the special services that Ebenezer will provide for the entire community. Susan?
Good evening. I'll try to be brief. I know it's getting late. Susan Farr, Vice President of Business Development for Fairview Ebenezer. And our address is 2722 Park Avenue in South Minneapolis.
Welcome, Ms. Farr.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say that the vision, we love the location because it's one-stop shopping for the seniors. And at Ebenezer, we know that that's really important. We've done a lot of focus groups. We know that the boomers are busy, they have a lot going on. And it would be very helpful also to have that full continuum at that building. And as Steve said, we developed and design and own York Gardens. That was attached to the 7500 York Cooperative. Ebenezer also was the one that was the first designer of a co-op in the world. And that has been very successful. About thirty-eight percent, like Steve mentioned, it was full, thirty-eight percent is coming right from the co-op. So we actually are full with the waiting list. So we are looking for another alternative for, for the housing. Ebenezer has been around ninety-five years plus. We are one of the premier providers. We own and manage on behalf of others. So this would be managed on behalf of, of others. And we have fifty-nine properties that we own or manage within the whole Minnesota state. We just got awarded again for the third time, a hundred, from the Star Tribune, one of the hundred best workplaces. And then we also got a double award this year, so we're very proud of what we do. But mostly, we're extremely proud of what we do with our seniors. It's a huge priority to us. It's part of our mission. It's part of our DNA. And we love the Edina area because it is rich with seniors and we know that we can take care of them in a great way. And, and I, like, I think I mentioned this already, but just the full continuum because we know that these children of the grandparents or the parents are extremely busy and they don't want to move and move and move them again. And so to have all the continuum there from the independent to the nursing home to the care suites, if someone at Twin City Orthopedic had a knee or hip done, so they could have the short-term stay and the care suite is that, you know, it's just a nice option. And we started that at York Gardens and that has worked very well. Some people have chose to live there long-term also. But it is nice to have that full continuum, be able to run across the skyway to the pharmacy right after the surgery. As we all know, with the ACOs coming, which is the accountable care act organization, that as people have surgeries, they're, they want them out of the hospital pretty fast and that's happening nationwide. It's somewhat a nice alternative just to be able to zip across the skyway and have this new senior housing setting there.
Thank you, Ms. Farr.
I'll introduce Ed Farr, not a relative.
Gives us fewer names to remember. Welcome, Mr. Farr.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be before you again this evening and it may seem tedious to see our team here one more time. We've been working on this project for more than a year, year and a half. But truth be told, I'm energized about the project again. Because of this change in use, we are here primarily to talk about the change in use from the medical office building use totally over to this senior care facility. And I'll keep my comments abbreviated this evening and let at the time and whatever. I just have a few slides that I wanted to show you and we'll get on to it here in short order. I just have a few slides that I wanted to show you, and we'll get on to it here in short order. This first slide that you're seeing now is just a representation of the project that's been approved with the five-story medical office building, not the one that we're here to talk about tonight, but our currently approved project with the parking deck on the west side, the office building on the east side, the five stories, the podium construction that we talked at length about during our approval process last year, and the detailing, the multicolor brick facade, the three bricks, the bronze-colored glass, and that distinctive curved corner feature. We had a lot of discussion on that, and how that really helps the introduction of this medical area as you're coming southbound from the crosstown area along France Avenue. Underneath that arch bridge at the Fairview parking ramp to introduce this project to the community at large and help you make that corner. Similar view with our new proposed design. Note the similarities first with the color scheme. These are advanced models that aren't in your packet. I should have mentioned that before. We're continuing to advance the design and show more clarity and detail for you, and these are new to staff and you. So to the extent that these vary slightly, I'll point out the differences again in coloration. We've adapted our three-brick color scheme that was consistent with our previous design onto this model that you've received, which was more of a chromatic, monochromatic view. Detailing is very similar, the distinctive corner, the crown at the corner of 65th and France Avenue, the introduction of the public artwork, certainly the public pedestrian features that we have with the sidewalk, especially the wider plaza-style sidewalk going along France Avenue with those raised colorful planter bed areas, the open plaza space literally at the corner outside of our curved entrance feature here, and continuing along 65th Street, leading towards the front entrance all the way to our western property line is the sidewalk, as well as the introduction of your new city-style Shepherd's Crook streetlights that the engineer, Hul, had talked about with us when we were getting our final approvals last year, to introduce those along the city sidewalk. They weren't originally part of our solution, but they are now. Shaded in translucent is the Skyway, just translucent shaded to allow you to see beyond to the rest of the project in this diagram. I'm just going to walk around the building quite briefly. This is helicopter view, looking down across 65th Street to the south. Point of France is in the background of this rendering. I'm up high enough so that you can see that we are continuing the green roof on top here. And as a point of reference, when you took our roof area from the original project, plus the roof area that they were looking down on for the parking structure, that was around 60,000 square feet of total roof area between the two. We did have some green roof, of course, on our office building, portion of that. This roof area, absent the parking deck now, it's a wider building, is only about 45,000 square feet. So we have a significant reduction in roof area on our new proposal. That results directly in an increase in green space, impervious area on the ground. We have almost 9% increase of impervious green space area in the ground. So we're enjoying both benefits here with this new proposal. From the west, looking east, this is over the rooftop of the Cornelia Place Apartments. You can see the existing Fairview ramp on the far left here. I haven't modeled in the hospital beyond yet, but you can see into our U-shaped court. Again, we have rooms. It's a double-loaded corridor, so we have a courtyard here. And the feature of this particular courtyard happens to be a very walkable memory garden, a functional space for the residents here at grade. This is also, I don't know if I can, you can see my mouse, but you can imagine there in the middle of that courtyard where I'm speaking about. In the foreground on the left is our main delivery and vehicle entrance for the underground parking area. Of note, the garage entrance there is in the lower right-hand side to our lower level. That's where visitors and occupants of the building and employees will be able to get in and out in a secured setting. The loading dock has very few trips. We can be talking to staff about this in the future when we make final application, but between the trips that you can imagine for a facility like this with garbage pickup, move-ins, and I had a list of them. Thank you. Food service, garbage recycle pickups, resident move-ins, laundry and medical supplies. We still have a very low count, certainly under about 20 trips a week, probably in the magnitude of about a dozen or so trips a week, which is quite low for service vehicles. So we feel confident that not only are those low numbers, but due to our own occupancy, we won't be having those at nighttime. Garbage will be picked up during the day, so that headlines won't be a concern from the loading dock, looking back at Cornelia Place. We'll be developing a landscape plan, and of course, this is one area of setback along our west property line that I'm going to be concerned about for screening. As people come out of the lower-level garage, we'll provide landscape screening, so they don't interrupt the piece of the apartment buildings to the west. And from the point of France aerial view here, you can see that they are enjoying an entire frontage of more of a housing facade, the play of balconies and the different plane changes of the building, that it has a lot more character than our parking deck and office building had, just due to the change in use. Note that there's a generous open space plaza on the south side here where residents can come out to enjoy. This is an impervious plaza area for enjoyment, fireplace, and seating, what have you. So the green space and a lot of little pocket parks around here will add to the enjoyment for the visitors and the neighborhood in general. And this aerial view, just to show a similar enhanced view from the rendering that was included in your packet as the overall block. So in summary, I just want to make sure that the four main points are conveyed here, that this whole quadrant between 65th and 66th, France, the valley view, will now be all housing, as opposed to trying to introduce the medical office component into it. That was a point of discussion last year, so now it's an entirely housing-oriented block. We have a significant less roof square footage, which aids in the impervious surface on the groundscape. And we have 400 less cars being introduced to the site. We had about 548 cars planned for our medical office building. Traffic report was fine with that, but this is a significant less. We're around 144 cars parked here, 138 required per zoning ordinance, so that's a decrease of 400 trips, which is a significant lesser impact to the city infrastructure. And of course, one of the metrics we also use is the cubic volume impact. If we can't measure this metric, because the FAR isn't necessarily a good relative metric to change from resident, from office to residential, the cubic volume impact of this from the street side is significantly less. We have approximately 25% cubic feet less. We had about 3.7 million cubic feet between our parking deck and office building last time, and now we're about 2.9 million cubic square feet. So that helps. So in addition to the setbacks being the same or greater, the materials being same or greater, maintaining the podium, the beautiful landscaping, the pedestrian orientation, those are all similars, and we're doing better than all of that. So that's the reason for my enthusiasm. We hope you'll agree and provide some favorable comment. I'll stop there, and we'll be ready for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. Questions or comments from the Commission? Commissioner Grable?
The thing I'm having a bit of trouble with is why there's so many, so much less, can I say it that way? So much less parking requirement.
Maybe that's a, is that a zoning or?
Yeah, it's really just the change in use, office requiring a lot more, more parking than a senior housing. So it's a combination of senior housing and kind of the nursing home designation with the 100 units of care suites and transitional care. So the numbers required, just based on changing that land use, is far less than the medical office.
Well, how many, how many space, how many apartments are not going to be nursing home?
Commissioners, there is a sheet, I believe, in your packet. It's titled "City Edina Parking calculation for 209 beds." Half the project is PRD-5 Nursing Home, 100 residents. And that parking code is one stall for every four residents, and those folks don't drive, because basically visitors. So half the building needs 25 parking stalls. The other half of the building would be assisted living and independent living, which also has a lower ratio. That would be the next classification, PSR-4. That's basically two parking stalls for every three residents, plus employees. So we're very comfortable with the parking calculation. We've got 138 underground stalls and eight surface stalls, which does meet code.
And if we were... What's the code for medical? What's the parking requirement for that?
Five spaces per thousand square feet.
Which is like retail, right? Is that the same? Okay.
It's 100,000-foot medical office building times five. That's why our ramp had the capacity of 548 stalls.
And so medical office building and, for instance, Fairview, the medical, like the parking ramp across the street, is that the same calculation?
Theirs is based on a hospital designation, and that's number of beds and employees and...
So more similar to the nursing home type of model? Okay. Commissioner Platter?
I'm just looking at this parking, and it's great overall. You'll have less traffic. But I'm having issues kind of believing this, especially from a visitor's standpoint as to where the visitors are going to park in this. I mean, I'm assuming if you're just going by the city's senior citizen dwelling, you're going to have, you know, 25% at one time, potentially visitors parking there, especially on holidays or things like that. So is it, have you talked across the street, is there additional parking from the hospital standpoint? By the way, I love the Skyway, which I think we've talked about a few times before. But is that an option for that? I'm just really concerned, especially on visitors and even the senior citizen dwelling. And I, they will have cars, so just from your standpoint, even from that of renting those out if they're going to have adequate parking when they drive. You know, I guess they wouldn't drive after they go to the other half of the building, but in that first half, they would, and the visitors that come to those. So I'm having a concern with this toll number.
Commissioner, to answer your question, it appears that the independent and assisted living is your concern that we meet the parking requirement for those residents?
Those, the dwelling units, yeah, the assisted and independent living, both meeting theirs and, well, I guess, I would say both sides, both from the, you know, visitors overall. I mean, you only have 25 stalls for the nursing home, 100 residents, but I got to believe there's going to be a lot of people visiting that's going to, that's going to go into that. And where, you know, where are those people going to go?
Well, to answer your question, this is a business that Ebenezer has been in for 100 years. You've got 60 properties. They have a pretty good feel for parking demands. We'll have access for visitors to the lower level. If you're in room 382, we can key code the access to get into that lower level based on the room that you're coming to visit. So we've got a number of opportunities how we can handle that. But I'll let Susan Farr answer it, because the York Gardens is a very similar project.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm pretty parking conservative, you know, on the other one. I got why you went down, and I'm hoping people don't drive as much, but this just seems way too low, or at least substantially low from everything that's happening around that area. I mean, you've got all that campus there, and where do all these people go to?
Okay.
I could provide a little...
Yeah, I think part of this is, I mean, part of it is going to be your business analysis, but part of it is also the city ordinance. I mean, we have, we have code provisions that have parking requirements for certain uses, and we came to those with considerable research and analysis to figure out the right numbers.
Yep. And on top of that, we have asked WSB, who's doing the traffic study, to take a look at parking, how this, how this use functions and operates, and he'll have a recommendation in that regard. And WSB is actually doing a parking and traffic study for Seltale Fairview Hospital that will be on your next agenda, in fact, for an addition that's proposed to the hospital. So he'll have, we'll have the advantage of a traffic and parking study done for both the hospital and for this site.
Commissioner Platter?
So I just had two other comments along that.
Actually, before you go to that, do you want to hear from Ms. Farr about the business kind of?
Oh, are we going, I didn't know if we were going with...
Or you want to follow up on Carrie's point?
No, I had a different point, but...
Well, before we finish that, why don't, Ms. Farr, why don't you come up? Because we were talking about this parking, and I think Mr. Michaels deferred to you on the business analysis.
Sorry, I thought it ended when Carrie said they were doing a parking...
Well, but I also...
Fine, that's...
Yep, I'll just be brief. Your busiest day is Mother's Day, coming up this weekend here. That is, that's your busiest. Otherwise, everyone always believes that you need a lot of the parking piece, but it really, in York Gardens, it works perfect. Exactly what was the city code that you had here for parking for the independent, the assisted living? But the majority of this building are people that do not drive.
And as Carrie going to that issue, do we do the analysis on the parking needs the same way we did the York Gardens analysis?
Yes.
Kind of breaking it down, okay. Thank you. All right, Commissioner Platter?
Thank you, Chair.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, 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 no. So kind of, well, parking was the one, but then the other thing is the density here. I, you know, I think I'll just cut to the chase on, this would be basically almost double of what the city's approved to date. So, and I'm not saying I wouldn't necessarily support it, but I'm just saying the city, I think, would have a hard time supporting it. So just be aware of that. And then the other question I had for you, Carrie, was what does this compare to for, I know it doesn't compare to anything in Edina, but can you find comparisons, or maybe Ebenezer has some, of other areas in Minneapolis or something? Just kind of, so to help at least me and maybe everyone else understand what this density is in comparison to. Sometimes it's good to have a comparison, and as you always cite in here, that whatever is 40 units per acre, you can go look at that, and you can understand what that looks like in context. So that's just a thought, to do that when that...
Yep, that's a good suggestion. We can look at other cities and similar mixture of use and have that comparison when we come back through the next time, should we get to that.
And again, I'm just cautioning that this is probably double what's been approved in the city roughly to date, and it's much more beyond what the comprehensive plan is. So I'm not saying that's good or bad, but you should certainly be aware of that as you go through this.
I'd like to just follow up on that point for a minute. From a density, you know, one of the things that occurs to me is this whole continuum of care notion. And I'm curious, and maybe Ms. Farr, you might be the one to respond to this. Is the proximity, you know, if you follow the continuum of care to its logical conclusion, you're at hospital beds in a hospital. So, I mean, what's the density of Fairview Hospital? I mean, if you took those beds as individual beds, then maybe that's very dense, even though we don't consider that density for dwelling units.
Well, that's kind of my point, is this is, it's technically dwelling units, but at the same time, it's not either. Because it's somewhere in between, and it's harder to define, but it's not a true apartment building, but then it's not a hospital. So what, how does that fit?
Right, and that's why I mentioned the range. If you just took the assisted living, the 109 units, that's a density of 46 units an acre. It's the other 100 beds, how do you, you know, it's, that can almost be seen as a hospital use.
Well, that's what I was kind of, is half of it almost more of a hospital use than a true residential use?
I'd be curious, Ms. Farr, if you could just speak a little bit to, you know, since you do have York Gardens, and now you've got this, it sounds like York Gardens is very successful. But what is the advantage of being literally on, you know, Fairview campus? Obviously, you have a corporate relationship with them, but is the proximity, does that, is that an enhancer for you about this particular project?
Well, it is because the location, because again, like I had mentioned, people are very busy. And so we like that location, because some of the people will be, like, having an extended stay or observation rooms. Care suites have had their hip, their knees done, so it's important, you know, they want to be able to... So it's important, you know, they want to be able to rehab, recoup somewhere and not drive and drive and drive. So, I mean, we like the location because it's kind of the, right there on France Avenue, you just turn off on France there, and it's kind of the destination medical hub. And I, to answer your question about, like, the continuum of care, from the independent to the assisted living, to your memory care or your care suites, a lot of people have also, like at York Gardens or any of our buildings, it's kind of a hybrid. They're saying, "I'm not going to move and move and move again unless I have memory care." So they're picking out their square footage and their apartment and their view, and we're bringing the care to them, and we're bringing the packages to them. And a lot of them are saying, similar to my home, "I want to pass here, and I want hospice to come in." And so it's not really the hospital bed. A lot of them are passing right there.
So I guess the question for me is, is there anything different about that model because this facility is right next to Fairview Hospital than you would apply in a York Gardens situation?
Well, what's different is the nursing home section and the observation, if there would be the observation rooms, because that more higher-end complex care or the medical assistance, which is a different pay factor, that is usually not always attached to other senior housing. So that's the component, that if someone can't transfer or they're too ill, they have to leave York Gardens, they could just stay right there.
Okay, so this would provide another layer of the continuum that York Gardens does not.
Yes, so if a family was shopping, most of the other alternatives here, and they would say, "I'm just too busy and I don't want to move and move and move," they would say, "This is a really nice alternative because, you know, I think Mom, knowing that she was diagnosed with Parkinson's or whatever, will end up in the care center or the nursing home eventually."
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Forrest?
Ms. Farr, I have some questions for you as well. First of all, so all the care suites and all of those things, they are also, there's an age requirement as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it will be completely senior, no?
Correct.
And is the moratorium against new nursing homes been lifted?
No, they would be, we would be, work in conjunction with Volunteers of America with their beds. So, yes. But no, well, you could purchase some beds from people that are closing down, but yes, there's still a moratorium.
I figured with the size of Ebenezer, they had a way of dealing with that, but I was wondering. My concerns, I mean, can you speak a little bit more about affordability that's projected?
Well, a nursing home is a totally different pair. Now, are you talking about affordability with nursing homes or just the senior housing piece?
Both, I think, because of the way it's been, was presented in our packet.
Okay. You know, it really depends. A lot of it is how the performer works. As you know, being in Edina or some of these other areas, there would be, if the team has decided, which I know we're working through all the numbers now, it would be, it would only be based on a percentage that would be affordable. And that's called an elderly waiver.
And Medicaid beds available?
Yes, yep.
And one thing that I'm concerned about, and this isn't so much a question, is the fact that we're kind of isolating people into a building with all these services and retail geared toward their needs and versus integrating into the community more. This is a really isolating location, in my opinion, because of the busy streets and the fact that the grocery store is in a walk away, Centennial Park is in a walk away. I mean, it's a corner that's kind of of itself. And so that's a bit of a concern for me. And what was my other question that I had for you? Do you have other residences that, senior residences that have the volume of traffic in the area and lack of other, what do I want to say? Day-to-day residential amenities, like grocery shopping nearby within walking distance?
Well, all these senior buildings, or I should say, most of them have a van with, of course, an activity director that is taking them out on scheduled transportation. And I know there's quite a few seniors behind in that Cornelius place that love that, and it's kind of the same location. And I have a friend that lives there, so that's how I met some of the, there's several of them living there, and they love the location. And I think, too, that we do a lot with lifelong learning and a lot of intergenerational. Ebenezer was the first to do the lifelong learning, which is the music, the arts, the McPhail music, the therapy. And then two of our properties has a daycare with the intergenerational, too. And so that's really fun. We really make sure, we don't want anyone to feel isolated. There's a lot of activities. Everyone living there gets to fill out a form as to what is really important to them because we do want to enhance their lives and not have it be somewhere where they feel like they're locked down or in a secure area.
Commissioner Carr?
I just wanted to comment. I was not, I did not participate in the first review process, so I can't really compare the two. But I will say, I do like this design, the fact that you've reduced the square footage. Apparently, you've got some areas that are carved out for terraces and courtyards. I think adds some interesting architectural elements. The design of the building as well is interesting. It's not just flat walls on all sides. So overall, I think it's very architecturally pleasing.
Commissioner Potts, and then I'll come to Commissioner Shear.
Okay, a question for Mr. Farr about the building construction type. Changing from commercial office to assisted care, memory care, does that change the construction type that you build in? In other words, this generally looks the same, but it also starts to look like a lot of the residential construction we see going up around town that has a lot of wood framing involved. Can you talk about some of those changes?
I can. Our previous medical office building, our previous medical office building was a structural steel-framed building with columns and beams with a precast concrete floor system with a concrete topping over the top of the plank. It was developed to type 2A construction, and we had a different construction type for the parking deck, which was precast concrete for its durability and exterior exposures. This will be a different type of a structural frame. This is a cast-in-place post-tension concrete design for fire and for soundproofing, both very safe, secure, and quiet structure, top-of-the-line structure, frankly. So we will have, instead of any spray-on fireproofing that you may have heard that product thrown around when you're constructing a steel building and you have to provide fire-resistant assemblies, you have to spray the steel to protect it from softening under a fire event. With a concrete structure, you do not need to do that. Also, with steel sound transfers, just a little bit more through structural steel. Fine for office buildings, but in a sound-sensitive structure like this, we're choosing to be, err, on the safe side and use concrete.
And that'll certainly work well for the green roof you have planned as well. How about the exterior wall construction? And I guess I'm, what I'm going to get to is the, both the longevity, you know, durability of the building and its energy efficiency in the wall construction and window types.
Frankly, we're not quite there yet. I'll be honest with you. Right now, we're going to be talking about that very thing. We expect that it'll be similarly constructed, which is a brick veneer over a structural steel stud, very well insulated. Of course, drywall finish on the inside, but a very tight wall system in terms of energy efficiency, to be sure, with the brick veneer on it.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Shear?
I think I probably have some questions for Ms. Farr. First of all, I'm assuming that the 20 care suites, the TCU, is for your own residents only?
No, that would be for anyone.
Would be open?
Yes, it would be open for anyone.
All right. And in the independent and assisted living rooms, are there kitchen facilities in all or part?
Yes, yes.
All?
So they would have a kitchen, even though in most of the assisted living, they take all the meals, but they still, if their daughter or their son comes with their favorite meal or ice cream, and they do want that kitchen. It really, one of the things, especially to make it feel like a home, they really want that kitchen.
Okay, so the independent and assisted living will have kitchen facilities. What's the average size in square footage of an independent or assisted living unit?
Well, that really depends, because every time we do a focus group, now, if you ask the boomer child, they would say huge. You know, like, the Presbyterian homes, when I was just looking at that Wayzata project, some are almost 3,000 square feet. That's almost unheard of. That is a huge, huge building. But that is unheard of. But I would say an average, I mean, people like to see, you know, in the two bedrooms, anywhere from 950 to 1,000, like, 300 is kind of, you know, your nice size. And, you know, I would say an average assisted living is anywhere from 600 to, you know...
And you're making the point that I guess I was going to get at, which is, when we talk about the density question, these really are small apartments. They're not just rooms that have been converted...
No, it's not.
Into a living space.
No, it's not a conversion.
It's not like a hospital room?
No, not at all.
I wanted to make that point.
It is very much like a home-like setting, and the more home-like it is, the better. Everyone loves it. So it, beautiful cupboards, beautiful countertops. Yep.
I would say to my fellow commissioners, after spending two and a half months as a resident of the Masonic Home in a TCU unit, there isn't as much coming and going as you might anticipate among the average residents of the facility. And even the guests are, they come in small waves, not large waves. You're not overrun with guests on most days. And I like the idea, which is true of the Masonic Home, of having this continuous kind of care. I watched a number of residents move from one unit to another as things were decided about their health, and it was extremely kind and, I don't know if relaxing is a word you can use in a situation like that, but helpful to the family and the residents that it could happen on the campus and that they wouldn't have to reestablish themselves in a new location. I like the concept a lot. I think it's a very useful concept.
Yep, no, I agree with everything you said. And that's a great TCU. And we, Fairview has to refer a lot of people to Masonic in Bloomington because we don't have enough of our own. And again, that's why we love the location and the site right across the street, because a lot of them say, "I would prefer to stay in Edina, so my loved ones could come and see me more or bring me my favorite snack." But a lot of them have to go to Bloomington just sheerly because of the volume.
I would add, too, the proximity to Twin Cities Orthopedics, which could have run its own van service from the Masonic back to the Twin Cities Orthopedics location will be fabulous in terms of helping those people that are healing from surgery.
Right, and we've helped them with their Twin Cities Orthopedics up on the care suite floor at York Gardens, and that's worked out well.
Yep.
Commissioner Crable?
Well, I don't want to rain on this love fest, but I do have a couple of questions. And maybe it's nothing more than sort of a fatigue factor, which may be affecting some of the residents at Pointe de France, I'm not sure. The first question is, you know, you just built the, you just built the facility at 7,500. There's one going up on York. We just approved the waters not too long ago. Can you really justify, in this market, can you really justify the numbers for this type of facility? Secondly, and this maybe gets to the fatigue factor, why now, and why didn't you do this before, and how did we get here? Why did we go through a year of, and several meetings, getting your original proposal through, and now you apparently have thrown that out and you want to do this? And I'm curious about what's going on here.
Okay, I'll add to the first point. For all these, there is a feasibility study. Of course, all the banks have to see that. I think they look at it, this is what I've done for 26 years. I think they look even closer now after kind of the dip in the real estate and banking in '08. And Edina is one of the deepest zip codes. Richfield, Edina, Bloomington, all of them have the highest population of seniors that do not want to leave. They don't want to leave their doctor, they don't want to leave their bank, they don't want to leave their church. And so it's really important that they get to stay in their area. So I don't know if that clearly answers your question, but I do, we would never look at something with a study not showing positive. But I think you're just going to see more and more of them, especially in certain zip codes. Now, this is just my opinion, but if you're out towards the Rogers, Maple Grove area, that's a much younger zip code, and the seniors just aren't there. So you're not going to see the growth like you would here. I hope that answers, sir.
Commissioner, the essence of the project is the proximity to the hospital. We've been talking with Fairview for over a year on uses for the site. It started probably in January with the desire for transitional care, skilled beds being attached to the hospital. The hospital has a fair number of observation days where patients are not paying the going rate of a traditional hospital bed. So it's an economic decision for Fairview. It's a very strategic decision. 200 beds is a good-sized project. They'll be leasing out on a long-term basis, and it's very integral as they look forward to cost control for alternative medical provision. So we can get other people to provide a position paper or more detailed for that. But the building is very important to the way the hospital functions, but then also for the seniors in the area. Susan mentioned Volunteers of America, their facility. It's full. Fairview Hospital, it's, Southdale is one of the largest referral sources for transitional care. A lot of those folks end up having to go to Walker Methodist at 34th and Harriet or down to Masonic down in Bloomington. So with that kind of demand, a unique site, certainly, we'd like to do the medical office building, but with this customer at our doorstep, we're coming to you and to the community here and seeing if you're also in support of that new use and massing for the site.
But we're not all of those factors present. What has changed? We're not all of those factors present a year ago. I mean, I'm trying to reconcile the fact that we spent a lot of time and effort and angst, under very good leadership, by the way, approving that prior project. And now, boom, we turned the corner and it's a brand-new project. I'm just trying to reconcile that change. How did it happen and how did it come? Weren't all those factors there before, and why didn't we do this a year ago? That's my question.
Sure. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate that. We've, Aurora Investments has put a lot of money into architecture, and certainly, we've put a lot of money into the approvals. This was new information in January. It was new information in February. We had not even thought of this process in December. So we've worked very hard over the last 60 days. We don't come here, well, we do come here with some fear and trepidation of being held out. So, but looking at the big picture...
It's under new leadership now.
And I believe, Southdale Hospital is the largest employer in Edina, and when they have a desire for a specific business component, Ebenezer has a wonderful reputation in our community. You just can't ignore those factors. I mean, I don't have many buildings left in my bones, and I'd like to do something unique and different, and this is a spectacular opportunity for our region. It's going to help the other senior care facilities in the area that are referring out people that need specialized care. And we're going to have a building here that's attached to a hospital. My parents went through a lot of what we've talked about here, and they want to see the hospital. They want to know where they can get the security of good care. And there's, in our opinion, no better group than Ebenezer to handle a site of this size. But we do need the 200 units. So as we talked to the architects and the professionals, we said, "Okay..." So as we talked to the architects and the professionals, we said, okay, we've got cubic footage of the medical office building and the ramp, is there a possibility to take that cubic footage, make it all housing? And it worked out very well. So Ed Far Pope Architects have designed 200 units that are 25% less in mass of this building than what we looked at in December. That's a big number. Parking, I mean, these folks don't drive. I mean, we're going to have 400 less parking stalls and those parking stalls turn over two, three, four times a day. So I can't wait to see the WSB traffic study. Plus, we've got all housing in this sector now, Pointe de France, Cornelia. It really fits nice. So we're very excited about the project. We've hired the best people to create really a national model for a senior care facility. We hope you feel the same. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Kilber.
I'll just make a few comments before I head out for the evening. I have worked personally with Ebenezer Foundation. I met Susan probably a year ago. I've been to York Gardens probably five or six times, been there twice in the last month. I work a lot with them just through other organizations that I'm involved with. So I do have a lot of respect for what Ebenezer does as a place in this community and what York Gardens has done to revolutionize kind of the way that senior care is looked at in our community. So I was excited when I saw this brought before for another opportunity for something similar to York Gardens to be put in Edina because I feel like it has done a lot of great. I, for, in reference to the proposal, I like that there's less roof space. I feel like by adding the courtyards and by adding more green space and continuing that green roof on top, it really maintains some of those more green values and I think that that's really good in that residential area. I also like the elimination of the above-ground parking garage. I don't think a parking garage was appealing to anyone in this kind of residential square that you referenced. And now that it is residential, I feel like that's much more appealing than a five-story above-ground parking garage. Like I said, just the overall site, I like how there's multiple areas. There's the front area for loading and unloading with, if there was going to be retail opportunity. Then there's the back, which holds the south side, it looks like, which has that impervious courtyard, a lot of outdoor area, and then also the memory garden on the west side. I like how all of this is incorporated into the plan. I am interested in seeing how it moves forward in relation to it. And then I did have one, did you say that you acquired another property to have this built? Or is it the same area that we were looking at before?
So is that second property that we?
So it is. It's the same area that we were looking at with the medical building and the parking garage?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Commissioner Forrest.
Quality of life for our seniors is extremely close to my heart and I do think highly of Ebenezer based on family experience and personal experience doing some clinicals there, but I'm, this is just a high-level comment and it isn't a criticism necessarily. I'm concerned because we went through this whole discussion of building a medical campus in that area, like this is going to be a high-end medical center with, with a lot of innovation and specialists and things like that. And I envisioned it that way, so it's difficult for me to get away from that thought that that was our goal for that area versus residential. I'm also concerned because the retail is now going to be, the public, the retail geared toward the general public is going to be eliminated or would be eliminated. Because also, a lot of our discussion had to do with, well, our France Avenue corridor, that this is supposed to be an area where people are, they're utilizing the length of it, they're utilizing the sidewalks, they're stopping in at different shops and the attractiveness from the street. Now we're going to have this wonderful public sidewalk, as you say, and this public art, but it's not for the public. It's for the residents of that, that building. And to me, what happens then is on that corner, right after, you know, things stop at that point. I don't see it as the kind of place where you're going to have people from the office buildings dropping over to get their glasses adjusted or to eat lunch and things like that. So that's my perception and my concerns, but I, I think it's just changed the whole vision for that area a lot. And I'm especially concerned that we're giving up on the idea of, of welcoming the public along that stretch of sidewalk, that that's going to be now, a residential area is going to belong to them. And as much as I love them, I, I think we're really changing our vision a great deal here and I want to give it some careful thought. You're frowning at me.
No. She's just tired.
Yeah, so I, yeah, it's, so I'm concerned about the change in vision because I really had gotten my arms around that one. And as much as I think this is very worthwhile, I, it's hard for me to give up on that because we did discuss a lot of that, including the landscaping and all of those things, so.
This is not a public hearing, but given that there are a few people who have hung with us for three and a half hours, if there are folks in the audience who'd like to share any observations or thoughts, I'd welcome them at this point. Come on up, introduce yourself and.
If I may, Planner Teague, I believe this is sketch planner review, it's not open for public hearing?
It's not official public.
I, I think we have the latitude to listen to a couple of people who are here.
Okay, thank you.
Why don't we let her go first and then?
Oh, sure.
You.
Thank you very, very much, commissioners, for this opportunity and thank you, people from the planning department. My name is Susan Lederman. I live at house number 402 at 6566 France. I wondered, did you all get the letters that my husband and I brought over Friday?
Yes, we did. They were in our packets. Thank you.
Good, I hope you will, at some point, get time to really read the letters through.
Well, thank you for providing them on Friday. Oftentimes we get them on Wednesday and they're on our desk here and it's hard for us to read them as we're trying to listen, so thank you.
Well, do you know what? The folks trying to put forth all this stuff that they're trying to bedazzle you with and everything, had a meeting with some owners of homes at 6566 France. They had a meeting at four o'clock. So our building, 20% of it, the homes are owned by people under the age of 55 and many of the people over 55 work. So having a meeting at four o'clock last Wednesday meant that the many people who work couldn't come to the meeting, so they were not able to talk. But we did get what I would call misinformation or misleading feelings because these people who presented to us made it quite clear that the PUD transferred, that everything was okay and you all approved everything and there's no problems. And we had no business really having any objections. I said something about parking, they said, there's free 20-minute parking at the Fairview Skyway Ramp. I called the Fairview Skyway Ramp office. It's only 20, it's, it's 15-minute, not, they said 20-minute. The Fairview website says 15-minute. The person at the ramp office said, oh, we don't really have a lot of extra spaces because we're building a new ER and so we're going to need every space that we can get for a new ER. And right now, the Fairview Hospital website explains, they get 45,000 people a year in their existing ER. So this possible suggested skyway, which no one has given any proof who's paying for it.
Well, Ms. Lederman, if I can just interrupt. One of the things you need to understand about the stage of the process we're at and the spirit with which I invited the comments.
Yes.
Is that we are very early on in this process.
Right, but they indicated it wasn't.
Well, they, actually, actually, both things are true. They did get approval and they went through an elaborate process to get that approval. And now they've come back for a different angle on it and we are starting at this process. And the, the concept behind this process is to identify issues so that the applicant can be aware of them. So you flagging a parking issue is a good thing, but I don't want you to think that we're anywhere near completing all of the decision-making.
But it's a done deal, it's not.
So part of, the spirit with which I invited you to come up and share some things is just things that we should be thinking about so that we're not missing the vote on that.
Well, thank you, because, I mean, again, they indicated it was a done deal, which is why we knocked ourselves out to get you letters Friday.
And it was. It was the last time, but now this is a new deal.
Oh, okay, good. Well then, so some of the, the things are that it's 209 homes right across from our homes, there's 140 homes in our building, that's just too much right in our faces. That public space that they're talking about with a fireplace and people congregating maybe 24/7, that's right, their balconies are right by our balconies. The way their building possibly will be designed will be going up to the seventh floor of our building. So it's way too big, too much mass, too tall, blocks. You just had that lovely lady talking about the possible house next to her, her privacy, her heir, her son, her light. Our privacy, our heir, our son, our light, that's all going to be affected. Fires, smoke going right, blowing at our building, all, all kinds of issues that we're not prepared to deal with because we were there a long time ago. That building has been there for 35 years or so. So to suddenly impose, to change horses in the middle of the stream and impose this huge monolith right in our faces and the 100 homes at Cornelia Place Apartments, I just think is outrageous. And then maybe my husband, who's an architect, can talk about some of the architectural concepts too. And Jack should talk about some of it. But if you get a chance, if you can read our letter, and we have now a very concerned group of homeowners, we're going to be meeting tomorrow and.
And I'm sure the city is going to want to hear your input. Thank you, Ms. Lederman.
Yeah, so, thank you for, for explaining because I was totally misled. It sounded, you know, they made it sound like it was totally a done deal.
Well, and it was a done deal before, so.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll be brief. Mr. Chairman, my name is John Windhorst. I'm a resident of Pointe de France, Unit 204, and I'm a member of the board. And all I wanted to say was that we met with the developer one week ago to discuss this for the first time. So the board has not yet really met to talk about it or meet with very many other residents to reach any conclusions as to how we feel, what our concerns are. But we will plan to do that so that we'll be prepared for your hearing.
And we, and I appreciate that, Mr. Windhorst, and part of, you know, what we're all trying to do and I think what the developer is also trying to do by bringing us a sketch plan, which is a voluntary approach on their part, is make sure, early on, before everything is kind of locked down and people have spent a lot of money elaborating on things, that they have an idea of the concerns that might come up, so.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, come on up.
I'm president of the Pointe de France Board, 6566 France Avenue, South Apartment 1206. And I certainly never thought I'd be back here discussing this topic again, so late even. Couple of comments generally, we were right, Mount Development did meet with the owners last week. I would say generally, the response was more positive than it was when they came with their first suggestion. Somebody mentioned the parking ramp. I think that was always a bone of contention among the owners. And so generally, topics, people felt a little better about it and the fact that that ramp was gone. That's my comment about Pointe de France. I'm going to say something personally about the hospital and having transitional care through a skyway. I have elderly parents who both lived into their 90s, one still alive. The most horrible part of dealing with an elderly, weak person out of the hospital is getting them to a transitional care location when they're very sick. And the nightmare of having to call around and finding out if there was a bed at Masonic Homes or Presbyterian Homes or Walker and then physically having to move a very sick parent. A couple of times, I had to move my dad by ambulance to Presbyterian Homes from North Memorial to Presbyterian Homes. Other times, from Fairview to Presbyterian Homes. When I saw this plan and saw, oh my gosh, you can take an older person right out of the hospital and roll them over to transitional care, believe me, there are a lot of baby boomers like myself who would be thrilled with something like this. So I think that's a very subtle thing, but very important to think about. So that's my personal comment. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to speak. This was very kind of you to let us do this when we know it's not part of your regular procedure. I'll try to be very brief. I'm not against the project per se, but what I am against is the massing and the size of it. I think putting it at two times or 2.2 or something like that, that's too big for the site. And part of the thing is, if you actually multiply the area out, they're putting up 225,000 square foot building. Forget the, the cubic, because that doesn't really relate, it's the floor areas. And I think they could also lower the building by going to a lesser floor-to-floor height. Right now, if you average it out, it's 11 foot six from floor to floor. Most residential buildings are eight foot six to nine foot six. The building could be reduced in height considerably, which I think would make it more palatable to us at Pointe de France. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lederman. I think we've gotten, anyone else that wants to chime in? All right, thank you. Thank you applicants for indulging me.
Are we allowed to comment?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, sure.
Just wanted to follow up on the, the last gentleman's comments about the floor-to-floor height. We actually are looking at lowering it somewhat, especially on our typical floors. Our first floor will be somewhat taller than usual because of our public spaces that we have down there, our town center and other rehab spaces and the kitchen and things like that. And then it's true that on the residential floors, we might be lowering it by six inches, almost a foot, floor-to-floor. So while the top of building will remain approximately the same, specifically below the 62-foot level that we have approved already, the roof may be another foot or two lower and we may be doing some, some better parapet architectural play on top for interest and variety that wasn't afforded to us before in the prior plan. And the square footage that the gentleman mentioned, we are having a significantly less square footage per floor. It's 45,000 square foot on our building versus approximately a 60,000 square foot footprint before on our, on our project, which was the combination of the office building and the parking deck. So that not only is it a cubic footage reduction significantly, but also a square footage reduction per floor.
And when you, you know, I think of it as the, the existing building we talked about before and the parking ramp and now the parking ramp is kind of being replaced by, you know, new building. From a volume or a massing perspective, is the, the portion of the building that will go where the parking ramp was, is that roughly the same? Is it taller, is it?
With our proof of parking level on our parking structure, it would be more comparable. We were proposing in our medical office building to not build that upper level of ramp until demand caused it. So, so in that comparison, it would be taller. That's correct. The West property line, we have an increased setback that will be appreciated from the south, as though you're looking at it from the Pointe de France point of view. Instead of a 15-foot setback on the west, we're greater than 35 feet. So there's a 20-foot reduction in building length. Besides the obvious.
And that's how you get to the smaller floor plate per, smaller number of square footage per floor?
One, one of many reasons. It's the, the narrowness of the structure itself that has that eye-shaped center.
Oh, right.
So it's, it's not as bulky as a medical office building where we have leasing debts to concern ourselves with, with office space clinics, the, the travel distance between your, your clinic room, the exam room on the outside and the hallways and the, and the medical services. So it's a much narrower building profile to. So, it's a much narrower building profile to lay out on the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, while we have Mr. Farr up there, do you know what the distance is between Pointe de France exterior wall and the exterior wall you're proposing?
I do not know exactly. I could venture a guess, and I don't know how accurate that would be just by looking at my site plan over there. I would have a tendency to think it would be around 130 feet.
I think as we have...
That would be my best guess.
Yeah, as we have future discussions, that'd probably be a good thing, sure, to be on the state.
Yeah, and to the extent there's -- I think, you know, you've heard on some of our previous applications tonight, the discussion of kind of floor plate difference, you know, the old versus the new. And if you can do a superimposition of that, I think that's a really helpful tool to, you know, if there's going to be a change in the shape of the footprint, it would be helpful.
Good suggestion. I'd be more than happy to do an overlay like that to drive home some of these points about comparison.
Yeah, I think that would help everybody.
Okay.
Commissioner Shearer.
As long as you're there. In one of the letters we received, the writer mentioned that the information that the Pointe de France folks had received was that the roof would be green. And then, they raised the question, and I guess I'd like to just ask the question of you. Does this mean there will be no HVAC equipment on the roof? And what about exhausts, antennas, elevator overrides, roof access stairs, or other equipment on top of this now slightly higher roof because we're including the -- what would have been the proof-of-parking level?
Sure. Most certainly. I won't have the technical answers to all those questions, but the point is well taken. There are certain elements that will project above our roof surface, similar that would have happened to the medical office building, minor in nature. The building code will prescribe that one of the staircases extends to the roof level for fire code, for access. Elevator overrides will be a function of the elevator system. We're using these new, modern, machine-room-less elevators nowadays. Machine-room-less elevators are elevator systems that don't have to have that large, ugly penthouse on top of the building.
Okay.
So, that's one of the benefits of building with elevators these days. And so, if it's a small bump above the roof, maybe a foot or two, depending upon the brand of elevator, that could be possible and really not an incidental item. Because of the use of this building with the cooking facilities, we will have a variety of small stacks coming up through the roof for ventilation that, just with the ventilation code, will be required.
And I remember in the city council discussions that you were asked to enclose the HVAC and other kinds of things. Is that still the case, or has that changed?
That would be the case. We are not under our previously approved project nor under this project asking for any large HVAC system equipment on the roof.
Okay.
That is to say, those large...
So, that would not be there?
...condensers, things like that. On our last project, you may recall, we talked a lot about the location of an outside chiller that was once proposed on the South property line, and now, we had put that on the parking deck. We'll have to find room for one of those as well. It's shown on our site plan right now.
But it won't be the roof?
Well, tucked away in our loading dock that nobody will be able to see except for, well, like...
Thanks. I just want to clarify that.
Yes, thank you.
All right, further comments?
Chair.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Just wanted to revisit a couple of things or maybe just one comment that Commissioner Forrest had commented on earlier, which was, you know, this concept that we had going back several months with sort of this vision, we're going to have a medical campus. And now, the whole thing has changed. I understand the reasons why it's changed, et cetera. But to some extent, you own the influence that you passed on to us, which is, at least some of us perhaps, that, you know, that we had this idea that we're going to do a medical campus over there. You know, I kind of look at some of the things that we were talking about, you know, months ago. And one of them was this idea of having a medical campus. It makes me wonder right now whether this -- and I think this is a question we have to answer as a commission, and ultimately, the council needs to answer as a council. Is this really the right use for that location? And I think secondarily, is this the right location? I mean, the idea, to some extent, for that location, at least one of the compelling things about it, was the proximity to cross-town traffic, the highway access in and out. It was a big selling point in terms of the earlier presentation that you made on, obviously, a different project now. But it sits out there, and I, you know, it's a -- we have this potential development space that was going to be a medical office and was pretty well-suited location-wise for serving traffic in and out and proximity to the hospital. And, you know, it's -- that shifted. And I look at the, you know, the concept of a medical campus versus what is now, you know, the Ebenezer-style residential living. And it's, again, it's a disconnect from what we talked about before. And it does make me wonder whether or not the use that we're now proposing, or you're now proposing for that site, is, in fact, the kind of use we want to have at that location. And I don't have an answer to that, but I certainly have been prompted to think about that a little bit more in terms of what the -- I think it's the right question or a right question to ask. I don't know how we're going to get the answer to that, but I think that's part of what we're going to have to start giving some thought to.
I think, Commissioner Carpenter, that that is a very good question to be asking. I have to say that I'm persuaded by kind of Mr. Michael's summary. In many ways, it's the perfect transition. It's part residential, it's part hospital. It feels like it's the edge of the hospital campus, and it's turning into residential right next to two other residential, but densely residential uses. And I think it's a -- I actually think it works better than the previous use that we're talking about, assuming we can get our arms around the density. I mean, the density is going to be a question. I think you've heard that tonight, and everybody's going to have to wrestle with the density and then the mass that comes with that. But I actually think the use is a really -- it fits, and I can -- I heard Mr. Michael's enthusiasm about that in his presentation. So, any last comments? I don't want to keep this any later. I appreciate your patience in waiting till near the end of the agenda and the other folks who've stayed in the audience as well. Commissioner Potts.
Just a couple other thoughts as we -- to take home of us about that density. I agree with you completely, Mr. Chair. And I think particularly in this location, for this use, I don't think we should be concerned about the height being proposed. It basically matches what it was last time. I think the skyway is certainly very important, and I think this is -- this solution is a way to increase density in a way that has a very positive impact on the community without increasing traffic. And in fact, it decreases traffic dramatically. And I think that's an important point to make as you come back and as you approach council. And one thing I would suggest, particularly with the -- all the properties that Ebenezer has currently, is to come back with some good comparable metrics so you can speak to number of parking spaces per unit or per square foot or whatever the metrics are to help people understand, not just based on what the building type feeds through our city project types and determines what the parking count should be, but what really works for Ebenezer and how that matches up with what you're proposing here. And then, let's see, I mentioned the skyway. I guess that's it. I think it seems very promising to me.
All right, I think we've exhausted the comments. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
I assume you'll be heading off to see the city council next? Good. All right. So, now, as we enter our fifth hour together, you see why I didn't want the zoning ordinance update to be a big discussion tonight. All I would say about that portion of our packet is, Carrie, I think you've kind of did some revisions from our conversation last time. Because our agenda for the next meeting is just as busy as this agenda, I talked with Carrie, and we decided that we would not do the public hearing then. We will do the public hearing on June 12th. So, if there's comments as you go through this, feel free to direct those directly to staff. We may have a chance to have a little bit of discussion about this at our next meeting, but the public hearing will be on June 12th. Commissioner Carr.
Could you send us an electronic copy of these proposed ordinance changes? Then, I could respond back to you via email.
Perfect. The other thing -- Commissioner Platter.
We don't want any discussion on this tonight.
Yeah, I think --
The comments.
I think, given the hour, let's hold the comments, and we can -- are they brief?
Mine work, but, I mean, I don't want to...
Yeah, I don't want to open this can of worms. I think it's just too long.
Yeah, well, I'm just double...
So, let's hold them. You can -- I mean, I will try to make room. Carrie and I will work to make room on the next agenda to have some brief discussion about this. Commissioner Shearer.
I was just going to say, I wonder if we could plan at least for the next time, because I do think it's important, before we have the public hearing for us as a group...
Okay.
You know, to feel collectively like this is what we want to put in front of the public.
All right. We'll work to get space on the next agenda to do that.
Just, I mean, just I had a few minor comments on there, but in general, I'll just say I was in agreement with most everything. So, just as a...
The one thing I would like to do...
I don't know about anybody else, but I would -- so, that's -- I guess my point is, I think we're getting pretty close to what we would be. I don't know if -- I'm hoping everyone would be close to agreeing on that.
And I think what I'd like to do is figure out a menu. You know, Carrie's got a couple-of-page overview here. I'd like to maybe even condense that down if there's related points that, as we pass this on to the council, what I'd like to do is end up with votes among the commission on various components of this rather than just a single up-and-down vote, because I'd like to give them a feel for where we are on each of these issues so then they can wrestle with it as a bigger piece to the puzzle. So, thank you for your indulgence on that. The next item is the Grandview District. The city council, as some of you may know, has asked staff to put together -- well, they're going to put together a community advisory team or community advisory committee to help with the next phase of the Grandview project. They've asked for two representatives from the planning commission. I have spoken with Commissioner Schroder, and he and I, despite our better judgment, have decided that we're willing to continue to work on that. And so, I would ask for your approval to designate Commissioner Schroder and I to move forward with that.
So moved.
And further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Our pleasure. Along those lines... Yeah, exactly. Along those lines on correspondence, and I'll get to in chair and commission comments, but we do have correspondence and petition. We have the council connection somewhere in the packet, I think, although maybe there wasn't one this week. Missed one this week, maybe? Yeah, I think we were out of phase. We meet so often that sometimes we don't have enough.
Yeah, this is a week where both planning commission and council fell in the same week.
Ooh. We should probably avoid that in the future, huh?
Council sets it for us.
Yeah, that's true.
It is what it is.
All right. And then, we have attendance. That is what it is as well. Chair and commission member comments. I would just add on my portion of this. Now that Commissioner Schroder and I are going to go do the Grandview thing, don't think that the rest of you are off the hook. There are two things that we added to our work plan. One is the Valley View-Wooddale kind of small-area planning prospect, and I'm going to be looking for people to help with that project. And then, we also want to do kind of a midterm review of the comprehensive plan so that we gather -- we kind of do a check-in halfway between the last update and the next update. And so, I'm going to be talking with some of you about what roles you might be able to play in that. And then, if you have a particular interest, let me know, but I'll try and get around to you before the next meeting, and we can talk more about that.
Do we know what the timeframe is on the Valley View-Wooddale plan review?
I would say that things are stirring, but I wouldn't call it urgent. But I think it's something that, by putting it on our work plan, we're kind of saying, let's see if in this calendar year, we can at least move the ball forward in some way. So, any other comments from commissioners? Very good. Staff comments? All right, then, it's time.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you all.
No discussion again?
No discussion. No discussion.